Noting the time and presence of a forum, I call the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee to order. Thank you all for being here this evening. There were some green pieces of paper being passed out. It has the agenda on one side, and on the other side is the rules.
... are concerned and questioning a number of issues around the separation agreement with Dr. Brand. Due to the nature of the agreement, we cannot speak for Dr. Brand's educational and operational philosophy. We can, however, be clear about the school committee's district priorities. And I'd like to start with the statement of purpose. The Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee strives to support the district in its vision to provide high-quality educational opportunities that inspire a community of learners by setting and adopting policy, hiring and overseeing the superintendent, and developing a thoughtful budget considering the needs of our students and the fiscal realities of the communities of Acton and Boxboro. And I'm going to ask Mary Rowland to elaborate a little bit more on these things.
Our work over the past year or so, which aligns with the district's long-range strategic plan in the 2017-18 budget that was approved at our recent town meetings in Acton and Boxboro, demonstrates our commitment to prioritize our values of wellness, equity, and engagement.
Point of order, may I ask a question? Which agenda item are you on now? Are you on item two or three?
Oh, I apologize. My apologies. My...I'm on Agenda Three.
Okay, so you skipped 2.3.
I'm happy...please, excuse me. I am happy to have Mr. Mandell discuss a review of the open meeting law requirements if you would like to. What we did was we put a link to the Massachusetts governmental website so that you could read it for yourselves, but I'm happy to have Mr. Mandell speak to that.
The reason I stand down is because when you're done with item 2.3 and that section is over, I have a question about it. And according to your public participation rules, I'm allowed to ask questions about things that are not going to be...you know, the public participation is for things not on the agenda. So this is on the agenda. So at the end of the section, I have a question. That's why I wanted to make sure you don't skip over that before I have a chance to ask.
So please ask your question now.
Well, I want you to go to 2.3 first.
2.2 was simply the response that we...the decision to part ways was mutual and amicable, and that beyond this, there isn't a whole lot that we can say, but we are here tonight to try to answer as many questions as we possibly can. We sincerely hope and intend to continue with many of the goals and initiatives that we have been working on and that we wish Dr. Brand well in his future endeavors. Now, Mr. Mandell, would you like to take a moment to just speak to open meeting law? Or I...
I think it's going to take a long time. You better just...
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll answer questions now.
Okay. Alan Nichel, Marion Road, I'm the publisher of Acton Forum. So you just said in your statement that you and Dr...the school committee and Dr. Brand had an open and honest exchange of views regarding the district priorities, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I've done a little study of the open meeting law. I'm not a lawyer, not an expert in it, but I don't believe discussion of...and discussion and exchange of views of educational objectives is covered by the executive session law. Executive sessions are only for very specific reasons. So I'd like to ask Attorney Mandell if it is legal to have an executive session to discuss educational, operational disagreements, philosophies, et cetera, et cetera, which doesn't appear to be a valid reason for an executive session, therefore a violation of the open meeting law. Thank you.
Mr. Dan Mandell, I'm sorry.
Wow, a promotion, a field promotion.
I know, I know.
First of all, your question assumes that the open discussions with Dr. Brand relating to operational educational philosophy took place at executive sessions, and I don't think that the statement says that. The open meeting law provides that executive sessions may be held for a significant number of purposes. I'm not going to go over all of them. It's Chapter 30A, Sections 18 and following sections, and certainly anyone who wants can look that up online. The open meeting law provides that a public body can meet in an executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health of an individual; that a public body can meet in an executive session to discuss the discipline or dismissal of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual; that a public body can meet in an executive session to discuss complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. In any of those cases that I've just listed, the individual in question has a right to certain notifications and other procedural rights that are personal to that person, and an executive session for those purposes needs to be preceded by compliance with those procedural requirements. When an executive session is held for any of those purposes that I've listed so far, if the individual wants the school committee session to be an open session, the session has to be held in open session, which means that when an executive session is held for one of those purposes in executive session, it means that the individual in question agreed that the session should be held in executive session. Another provision of the law that you might be interested in for tonight is that a public body is allowed to conduct executive sessions to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. In that situation, as you can imagine, the non-union personnel in question do not have procedural rights to be there, do not have a right to insist that the session be held in open session. Public body has a right to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And once again, as you might imagine, the law does not provide for the non-union personnel in those circumstances to...doesn't have the same kinds of procedural rights as in dismissal or discipline or hearing complaints about the person. And once again, the individual does not have the right to insist that it be an open session.
So that was interesting, but it didn't answer my question. My question is, is it a proper reason for executive session to have these discussions which should have been held in public, but instead appear to have been held behind closed doors?
Well, I'm not in any way agreeing with your speculation that discussions about...between Dr. Brand and the school committee about his educational, operational philosophy were held in any executive session.
Okay, so which open meeting were these held in? Because you can't have the school committee meeting behind closed doors without a valid executive session. Otherwise, it's a violation of the open meeting law. So there's some...
There has...I know, I know. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is not helpful at all to have an open and honest and respectful conversation, to have screaming, shouting, or booing.
Amy, I'm following...
I'm not finished, please. And it takes away from all of the other people in the room who would like to get up and ask questions because we spend time with this. So I'm asking you to please be respectful of the process and what we're trying to do here. We are here openly, ready to listen and answer as many questions as we possibly can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry if I've in any way been rude.
No.
I don't see anyone who's waiting to speak, so I'm not taking...
I'm sorry, Mary.
Just got here. Okay. You snuck up behind me.
I'm sorry, I was talking about the applause and the cheering.
Okay. So my question, very simply, is how can the entire school committee meet with Dr. Brand unless it's a meeting? Because that's a violation of the open meeting law. So you can't have these discussions going on unless you have a meeting. And since no one's heard of these meetings, and we've checked the recent minutes, there apparently hasn't been meetings that have been public. Therefore, they had to be an executive session. So I'm just asking, is this a valid reason for an executive session? If it is, then I can do that research, and if it's not, then obviously there's been a violation of the open meeting law. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, the...a school committee, it is a proper basis for a school committee to hold an executive session to consider the discipline or dismissal of a public employee or to consider...to hear complaints brought about or against a public employee. It is permissible to hold an executive session to conduct negotiations with non-union personnel, and it is a permissible reason under the open meeting law to hold an executive session for the school committee in private to hold...
Right.
To discuss strategy concerning the negotiations with non-union personnel.
Okay. So you've answered my question, so I have one follow-up. If you have a valid executive session, let's say to discuss a disciplinary matter, can you then have other items on the agenda which are not part of the reasons for having an executive session, and then to have those discussions in executive session? Or are you supposed to leave the executive session, go into open session, and have the discussions then?
The answer is if you have an on-related matter, for example, if you were having a discussion in executive session to consider the dismissal of a public employee, and a question came up concerning the budget, discussing the budget is not something that should be held discussed in executive session, unless it involves placement of security cameras. There are a couple of minor exceptions that we won't waste people's time on tonight. But yes, you would go into an executive session. On the other hand, obviously, when you're considering a discipline or dismissal of a public employee or hearing complaints brought about or against a public employee or negotiating with a public...with non-union personnel, various topics are either highly relevant or significantly relevant, and obviously, you can't have that portion of the discussion be in open session. So if it pertains to any of the listed exceptions, which I won't go over again, then of course it can be held in executive session. Otherwise, you couldn't have any discussion.
So you're saying in some sort of adversarial relationship where the employee is being disciplined, then you can discuss the reasons for that. But according to the statement that was read, this was amicable, and so therefore, I'm, again, confused that there'd be any type of...
I am not saying that there was an executive session relating to discipline of Dr. Brand or not, and I'm not going to. You probably know because there was an executive session posted for, what, April 26th, I think. I was not there due to a medical issue. And the minutes for that executive session have not been released, and it would be utterly improper for anyone to disclose the content of that meeting or, you know, who the person was or anything like that. Be completely inappropriate.
Until...
And a violation, I might add, not only of the open meeting law, but of the rights of the individual under discussion.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Narci Woods, and per open meeting law or school meeting law, I think I have about two minutes. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. Okay. Sorry, yes, please.
I wanted to quote Dr. Brand's end-of-year goals report that was issued to you on May 12th. When these goals were established almost a year ago, it was understood by all, including myself, that they were ambitious and would need to be supported by an extensive body of work. It was also understood that the entire school committee back in September ultimately supported and approved these goals with full knowledge that this would be a large undertaking on my part with the assistance of members of my team to coordinate and tackle. However, at this time, I shared the sentiments of the entire committee that despite the ambitiousness that this list of activities represented, there was clear agreement that all of this work was deemed timely, appropriate, and in all cases, necessary to supporting our continual advancement as a school system. So having the statement issued saying that views and interests were not aligned and the school committee's blanket refusal to answer or respond adequately as to what the school committee's views and interests are, if they don't align with what Dr. Brand has said, is a serious concern, and it's unacceptable to the general public that you are not going to answer this question.
So we are...we are here this evening to listen and to share our educational and the priorities that we believe very strongly and will continue to follow. I cannot speak for Dr. Brand. He is not here. He was welcome to come and chose not to. So I cannot stand here and tell you what his educational philosophy and operational philosophies are because that was done in a private...in a closed executive session. What...I'm sorry. I don't see...okay. Dave, would you mind explaining that this is part...this was part of the discussion as is appropriate, which is what Mr. Mandell just said. This is part of...this is all a part of moving forward in a negotiating and other...go ahead. Please say.
Sure. I mean, it's really just a question...the point of repeating what I said before, which is that an executive session was held on April 26th. The content of that was held in executive session pursuant to the open meeting law and to protect the rights of the individual involved. And I'm sure that the citizens of Acton and Boxboro would like to know all of the details as if they had been at the session, but they were not because it was held in executive session. And necessarily, that means that the public is excluded, and there are certain reasons for a public body, even though it's accountable to the citizenry, to hold certain sessions in executive session, which means by definition that the citizenry does not attend. The legislature has specified very clearly what the reasons are. Obviously, they had policy reasons for why they chose those particular topics. I think you can all figure out what those policy reasons were.
No.
And they...
We can't.
Well, if you can't, then you should write to your legislator.
I'm sorry, can we please be respectful when you have a speaker? If you would like to stand up and make a...ask a question or make a comment, feel free to do that, but shouting is just...it's never...we're never going to be able to have a conversation if people start shouting.
But for example, discipline and discharge of an employee can be held in executive session to protect the privacy, interests, and reputation of that individual. Discussions of bargaining, whether it's collective bargaining or with non-union personnel, can be held in executive session so that there can be a free exchange of views that hopefully can lead to agreements.
Hi, my name's Samantha Valente Phillips, and I'm sorry, I have not heard this much tap dancing since my daughter's recital. There is no honesty. First of all, he got up and said, "I'm not assuming that it was done under an executive order." Then the gentleman over here said, "Then that means it must be an open session." Then he got up and said, "Well, no, 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 wait a minute. It doesn't have to be an open session. You were tapped down rounding the issue, and if you feel a little hostility, you're bringing it upon yourselves because your lack of honesty and open and transparency in what is going on is the issue." Now, here's the issue I have. From my information, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, this committee has already been warned about transparency to its public. And it sounds like you are continuing to perpetuate the same negative behavior that is creating hostility among the people out here that is not appreciating the tap dancing going on by an attorney. I don't want alternative facts, I want the truth. Did it happen in an executive session, yes or no? Was it dismissal because of behavior that was unacceptable by him and therefore was not an amicable breakup? Or are you just trying to cover something up that you don't want us to know? Because that's how you're acting.
Why are we paying him?
And we should not be paying him an extra year if he was dismissed because of bad behavior. That is not our job. And so, yes, we are angry because we have children, some of us in kindergarten, who are going to be in this school till...for the next 15 years. And you were voted by us. You work for us, not the other way around. And it is time to do your job for us and open up, stop lying, stop tap dancing, and tell the truth, even if it's painful. Have we not learned anything from Washington?
Answer her question.
I am about to.
Answer her question.
Hold on. My goodness.
Excuse me. She is...has her mic open, ready to answer her question. Please stop shouting. My colleague is here, ready to answer her question, sitting here with a mic open, ready to speak. So please, this behavior is not okay.
So thank you for your comments. We understand your frustration. We have to tell you that we have a settlement agreement with Dr. Brand, and there are certain clauses in that that constrain what we can say. And we're sorry that that's the case, but that is the case, and we're held to law on that. We are trying our hardest to work and do the best job we can for this district, and this is the way it is. I'm sorry, I know that doesn't satisfy you. I can understand if I were on the other side, how you feel, but that's the way it is.
Hi. Is this on? Is this on?
If you would like to speak, then please come up to one of the mics.
I'm Charlie Cadlake. Back to the open meeting law. I happen to be somewhat familiar with all of the provisions of the open meeting law for reasons that some of you know, and I would like to ask a question to whoever wants to answer it. I'll first say, one of the provisions of the open meeting law is that it requires a motion in a public meeting which specifies the reason, the specific exemption cited for going into...excuse me, executive session. Was that done, and what was the exception to the open meeting law that was cited in this case?
That was done. We had an open meeting, and we went into executive session to...for the negotiation reason.
Just negotiations?
Yes.
And am I correct? Perhaps the attorney wants to confirm that in that case, some of the other things that he cited, such as disciplinary action, were not part of this process?
Not part of that meeting, no.
Not part of that meeting or not part of the process?
If we have executive sessions for individuals where it's called for a reason of complaint or potential dismissal, that whole reason, we cannot name the individual for whom that meeting is.
Okay, so this was clearly Dr. Brand, and it was for negotiations?
So we are required by law not to name the individual?
Why do you think we're here? I mean, come on. I mean, this is...I mean, let's not be silly, come on. It's very clear that that was the executive...something had to be done in executive session to reach this separation agreement, which is a written document, which I hope you will supply copies, not 100% redacted as is the usual case. And there has to be some kind of thought given to what the rest of us are supposed to think when such agreements include a provision to keep them secret. That doesn't fit aligning educational philosophies. So you have some explaining to do, and you have a lot of...you have about $200,000 worth of explaining to do as far as I'm concerned. And I would just hope this gets done because you have plans for some considerable projects in the tens, if not hundreds, of millions of dollars that will require the support of this community as well as Boxboro. I can't speak for Boxboro. And that's coming up fairly soon. Who's going to work on this if Dr. Brand is gone? He spent a lot of time on it.
I would love to...
Go ahead.
I would like to...if I could move into the next district, the priorities. I'm happy to answer anyone's question in this way, but I can answer your question, I hope, by when we move into the very next section and go over each priority and explain what we are committed to and the people that...and the people already in the administration that have worked tirelessly on every single one of these initiatives and are...will continue to do so. But that, if you would...after everyone speaks, I would be happy to address that.
Okay, but just so you're aware, that what's going on right now is not helping your case for gathering what may be difficult community support for what will be overrides or at least proposed overrides and a considerable expense on a school budget that's the most significant part of the town's finances. I hope you're taking that into account.
Charlie, thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maureen Liu. I have four children in the district. I know some of these school committee members as church members and of people that I've known and admired throughout my time and almost 15 years in the district. I know that you have operated in good faith. I know that you have devoted countless hours of service. On behalf of our children, I thank you for that. There's a problem with transparency, and it is why all of us came out on a work night. We feel excluded from the process. We don't understand why the decision was made. I am a lawyer. I understand the legality of the separation agreement, but it does not give me comfort to know that the initiatives that have been started, of which many of us support, reduced homework time, changing the start time, the emphasis on de-stressing our students, which is significant, that we felt was comfortably heralded by Dr. Brand, whether...where those initiatives stand and where is the path moving forward. Frankly, I am concerned about the open meeting law, but I am interested most in the path forward, and I see two options. First, as your counsel could certainly advise, any agreement can be rescinded if both parties agree. If Dr. Brand is willing to rescind the contract, and you are willing to rescind the contract, then we can go back into open meeting. then we can go back into open session and perhaps do this in a more thoughtful and transparent way. Second, if Dr. Brand is not willing to renegotiate or enter into these discussions again, then I think everyone in this room probably wants to hear specifically, which I suspect you're moving toward, where these very important initiatives are going to go in the future, which I think is of paramount importance for all of us who have children in the district. So, I thank you for your service. I hope this conversation among all parties is respectful. I don't think admonishing an angry public, to be quiet, is going to be helpful. It doesn't help me with my children. I don't think it will help you today. I think what would be helpful is if time limits were strictly enforced during this meeting, follow-up questions weren't allowed, and people are held to a two-minute speaking, and that would give opportunity for everyone to speak. I thank you for your service.
Thank you. We will be, we will be discussing that in the next section.
My name is Karen Schiefelbein. I live on Greenwood Lane. I have two sons who are here tonight. I really feel that there is no need to repeat to this group of adults that you cannot speak for Dr. Brand. We know that he has been doing an excellent job of communicating his philosophies, objectives, and priorities himself, which is frankly why he has so much respect from the parents and, as I've been told, the staff in this district. In order for us to move forward, which I hear is desirable to the school committee, we need to know your philosophies and objectives, preferably on a member-by-member basis, so that we can make a decision based on whether they align with our philosophies and objectives. You can speak for yourselves.
We would like to do that. We would absolutely, and that's exactly the next step that we would like to go to.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'd like to say just one more brief thing. If this divergence with Dr. Brand was brewing before the school committee election and both town meetings and withheld until after these passed, and I don't know that it was, but given the information that the community has been given so far, we can't rule that out. If that is the case, then frankly, I don't trust that this committee is acting as a representative body, and I would like to have that trust reinstated, please. Thank you.
So, at the beginning of the meeting, you all, would you mind just identifying yourself?
Oh, sorry. My name is Lisa Thomas. At the beginning of the meeting, you all identified, you know, you are mothers, fathers, have children in the school, and most of us probably here are as well. And I echo, you know, most of the sentiments of the people who came up and spoke today. And knowing what you know as a parent, you know more than us, and I ask you to put yourselves in our shoes as a parent, trying to do the right things for our kids and not having the information to do so. You've talked about open and honest communication, but I think the only people being open and honest are the audience members today. We haven't gotten the information that we should have in order to make the right decisions for our children. And I would love to see that rectified. I would love to see a path forward, and I agree with the woman who just spoke about, you know, reenacting that trust. But if not, I say to the community, go out and vote. Three people are up next year, three or four people are up the year after. Make your vote count, and make sure that this committee knows what we expect of the people who represent us.
I'm Nancy Waters. I do have two kids in the school, but I don't really think that matters. This isn't just for parents. This affects everybody in town. This affects everybody's real estate values. This affects their taxes, and I think we have to stop thinking that it's just about parents. And I do know some of you, and I want to, first of all, say that I know you have a thankless, exhausting job, and I do thank you for it, and I think we should all thank you for it. I also know that we have personal relationships with some of you, and I'm very much hoping that the personal relationships I have here are not affected, but defen-
Absolutely, they will not be affected. We understand.
Okay. Good. My daughter will be pleased. Okay. But defensiveness is not the appropriate response, okay? You are creating cognitive dissonance. We know you're good and decent people, but you're doing something that doesn't make sense. You have to address that cognitive dissonance. Now, Attorney Mandell spoke about dismissals and discipline, and you spoke about philosophical There's a big gap there. Something doesn't make sense. You have to start making it make sense. I'm going to ask you point-blank. Was philosophical differences as an explanation a lie?
No.
All right. Then I'm going to ask you how you didn't know Dr. Brand's philosophical, educational philosophy when you hired him through a very exhaustive process? How you didn't learn it through three evaluations? How you didn't know it when you extended his contract?
The entire, I'm sorry, I'm just going to, you can continue speaking. The entire statement is educational and operational.
Okay. Well, operational would not be, I don't think operational differences would fall under what Attorney Mandell said either. Okay. Finally, I'm wondering, and there's a two-part, two parts to this question. I'm wondering if those educational and operational philosophies could not have been better aligned with some outside facilitation? Did you not consider possibly getting perhaps a mediator to see whether the committee and the superintendent could get along? Okay. Now, this one, I want people to not react, okay? Something that happened last week at your committee, which those of us who've seen it on Acton TV-
I'm sorry. You're running well over your time, so if you could just please wrap-
I'm going to wrap it up.
If you would just please-
I'm going to wrap it up. It's a question. Okay. It's a question and a statement. Something that happened at your committee meeting last week, a statement made by one of you about the others of you is of great concern to some of us. And at the very least, whether it's true or not, it suggests to me you are not all getting along. And I'm wondering if you have considered seeking outside felicitation, facilitation of this. I happen to know that one of the top 10 mediators in North America lives in West Acton, and I can recommend a bunch of others, and I strongly urge you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Franny Osman. I'm not going to speak to this issue, but I want to support you in suspending or ending the meeting if people clap, heckle, laugh, or speak out of line, which I have heard so much tonight, and it distresses me, and it makes me really feel so negatively about the level of decorum of all of you. I don't think there should be any laughing, heckling, speaking out of line, or clapping during this meeting. If people want to speak, they come up, they stand in line, and I thank you for all of your hard work and your, whatever you're going through, because it's a very difficult position to be in. And if people feel that they want to get more involved, then get more involved, but do it the way you should, and don't waste our time with clapping, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Woods again. I just wanted to clarify my previous statement or question, since it really wasn't answered. I just really want to make sure that by the end of the night tonight, we all can leave here, understanding what each individual school committee member's actual educational, operational, philosophical interests are all, what the details are, because giving us the sheet of paper with the actual school priorities, we know that, we read that, we agree with it, it's fine. What are your individual school committee priorities, philosophies, and how you think things should be done? Because that's where we are all in question, because we know Dr. Brand's, and we know what's on the sheet of paper for the statement of purpose. We know that. What we don't know is the individual drivers behind everyone on the school committee, and that's what we want answered.
We would very much like to address that in the next section.
Yeah.
So, I'm very happy to do that.
Darlene Butler. I just want to know, when you went into negotiations with Dr. Brand, was this a unanimous vote to go your separate ways? I think we should at least know that.
I legally can't tell you that. I'm sorry.
This is crazy.
If you, I, I under, I completely understand your frustration, and until the meeting, until the minutes are released, because the vote was taken in executive session, it opens up the district to other problems.
Can I ask you, as the chair, if we were to get Dr. Brand to come back to the negotiating table, maybe with a mediator, we could maybe get this thing through? I don't think the taxpayers in Acton want to pay another $200-plus thousand for this, and we're supposed to trust you to pick a new superintendent on top of that? And clearly, if you don't like this one, what will happen with the next one?
We, the only response that I can give at this moment is that we entered into a mutual, binding, legal agreement. It was based on Dr. Brand's wishes and the school committee's wishes, and I'm not really sure what more to say at this point.
Well, if maybe the parents here can try to get Dr. Brand to come back to the negotiating table. I mean, I think we, as parents, should have some of the say, and even not just parents, just all of the Acton public, because they're paying for this.
This is Sushyam Radha. I am one of the petitioner who started the petition. I am here with the petition list, the number of the people who have signed the petition, and with their comments. With your permission, I want to give you all one copy each. Can I please? Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Of course.
Okay. So, very quickly. I was on May 18th meeting. I came here after I read that email, which was very shocking to me, and I came, I didn't get any answer. I came back, I went back home, and I was, what's going on? That's not right. I started thinking, what to do? And my initial reaction to start the petition was like, I want to see how the people feel about it. I started the petition with the hope that I get 50 signatures, and I can send you guys a letter. The 50 soon became 950. So, I think the people have spoken, and the copies which I gave you today has every signature and every comments. The citizens are speaking, and I think to vote the school committee, it takes about 700 votes. So, I think if 900 people are supporting Dr. Brand, there is definitely a huge philosophical difference between the citizens and the school committee, which needs to be addressed before we actually trust the school committee that they can make the right judgment going further. So, please take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Margaret Bussie. Just so folks know, myself and a few other folks got together to sort of draft a statement to be read here. I got here a little bit late, coming from another event. I don't want to read the whole statement. It was posted on Facebook, so a lot of people are aware of what it was, and it would be certainly redundant to a lot of what's already been said, so I won't go through it all. But I do just want to go through the main points and sort of the requests, the asks that we have for you. So, the main points, of course, and again, have already been brought up, but basically is that we don't like that there's been this lack of transparency and also a lack of opportunity for community input. Glenn Brand's broad support that people have already been mentioned, and of course, the resulting very chaotic situation for the schools and the community, which is that we're without a superintendent, we're in an environment where it's hard to find superintendents, and we have to pay nearly $200,000. Again, I think most of these points have all been mentioned. So, I just wanted to read you the things that we were requesting of you all. One is that, and I understand there's, and I missed the part where it sounds like an attorney spoke, so I missed that, and I apologize for that. But I think that whatever you can do to go back to the negotiating table with the interested parties, to enable you to be completely open and candid about the process that led to this decision. Because I think one of the big things, again, what people are upset about, regardless of the outcome, is that the process is broken. There was not a process for us to have any community input, and oddly enough, the agenda that I looked at for April 27th actually said that there was going to begin a process of getting community input on Dr. Brand's performance. And I'm not sure why that got jettisoned. It looked like there was a step in the right direction, and I don't know what happened. So, I think we have to be totally candid. How did this come about? What happened? Not just, you know, was it executive sessions? Were it small subcommittees doing something that other people didn't know about? What happened? And as other people have said, we need to know at some point how each school committee member voted. We really must know that. That's just not fair to us as voters. You're the superintendent's boss, but we're your boss, right? And I think you guys all respect that and know that. So, we have to be able to make decisions based on transparency. The second was just making available the reasons for this decision, as far as allowed legally. So, that's really the other points that people have been making, which is what really are those differences? What happened? Why did we, why did those, what are those differences? Essentially, why did he get fired, essentially? I know he resigned, but basically.
No, actually, he was not fired. This was a mutual decision to part ways.
Right. But it seems like he didn't want to do it, and it's, but anyway.
I don't think you can speak for him, because he's not here to say that what he wants or doesn't want. You'll have to ask him directly.
I actually did, but anyway. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to make jokes. I don't want to make jokes. I understand that.
Your two minutes are up, so if you could just-
So, I'll just say the last thing. Thank you. Thank you, Amy. I'll just say the last thing. I know you're trying to run a meeting, and it's very difficult. Which I think is very important to restore the trust, because that's really what's at stake here, and is to commit to begin a process of evaluating and making changes to school committee policies and procedures, so that greater transparency really can be expected in the future. So, whatever policies and procedures are in place now that allowed for this to happen need to change. So, again, those three things, be completely open and candid, make available the reasons, and commit to a process. And we respectfully request that these actions be taken by Tuesday, May 30th, if at all possible. I know you have another meeting coming up on May 30th. That would be great if some of these things can happen by then, so that we can all move on, and your important work on the committee can continue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Christine Marlowe from Boxborough. Thank you for all the service you do, but I want you to really think about what you've done to us. You have punched us in the stomach. We have come to you and said, why have you punched us in the stomach? And you just keep punching. You're not answering. You're not building trust. Boxborough's town meeting was in May, and this was going on, and nothing was said about it or even suggested. And to me, it seems like there's a bit of mismanagement here. We're talking about a half a million dollars when you look at lawyer fees and Dr. Brand's salary and benefits. That's a lot of money. And I feel like you're taking the taxpayers' money for granted. 58%, I was told, of our budget, of our taxes, goes to the school. We deserve more from you as representatives of us, and I have- And I have great distrust now. How are you going to find a superintendent that you are going to be able to work with? After this superintendent was given two positive reviews, and the last time you reviewed him, he was given an extension. Had you not given him an extension, we would not be paying for his salary. So, and why couldn't you work with him for one more year, as him being our superintendent, and continue the work, and then getting someone else? I just feel so broadsided, and I really, really am upset that you will not answer any of our questions, because we deserve answers. We are the ones paying the taxes, and you keep asking for more money, and I don't want to give anymore if I can't trust the people who are managing it. Thank you.
Thank you. I really, I really appreciate, and I hear your comments. All of us here, and I understand that this is maybe not the way it's been explained. I understand that you don't believe it. We want to share, we would love to share as much as possible, and unfortunately, we are restricted by so many laws and the agreement. And I'm sorry, and I hear every one of your frustration and concern and lack of trust. I do.
May I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Why wasn't the community involved before this executive decision? Why wasn't there an open meeting to talk to us about the problems that you were having? That would make the most sense. We are caring parents, we want the best for our children, we want them to get the best education. We have often given the 2.5% override when it's needed. Why didn't you take us into consideration? Why? Why couldn't you have done something like this in an open session, instead of making it behind closed doors? And now we're just stuck. And are we going to move forward with these projects without a superintendent? Or are we going to wait two years before we can finally find someone, who we don't even know will be really, if he's going to work out or not, or she? I mean, so why didn't you do that? Could you answer that question, please?
I can try, I can try a little bit. It moved into... It was a joint decision by Dr. Brand and us to do it in executive session. And I'm sorry, I don't know how better to say that, except that this was not only our decision. I'm sorry.
Great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristin Grip. I live at Sixth Anders Way, Acton. I have two kids that have gone through the system. One has graduated, and one is graduating next week. I have gone through three schools here, nine principals, four superintendents. So I can tell you that life goes on, and kids graduate, and, you know, school moves on. I don't need to know why Dr. Brand is not returning. I can't imagine he would want to come back for another day. Like, yeah, as I said, I don't need to know, it's not my business, that's yours, and I respect that, and I respect what you guys do behind closed doors and what you do in front of people. But I do hope that you understand how important the perception has been of this process, especially in terms of, I think Alan talked about it earlier, budget, paying for an extra salary for an extra year, and the timing of it, when it looked at, you know, town meetings for Acton and Boxborough. It just smells really, really ugly. And if we do nothing else tonight, I know there's going to be a lot of people that speak, a lot of things to do, but what I hope that you all walk away with is a change in policy, this upcoming selection meetings, because we are most likely going to lose our high school principal also, who has been actively looking, and great, good for her. I mean, she's actually really good, but I'm really happy for her personally to do something else. So we are going to have two really, really important vacant positions, and I hope that those selection committees going forward are going to be extremely open and transparent. And I hope that the process changes, and we never have to find ourselves back here in this situation again. Thank you.
Yeah, I completely agree with you, and we have every intention of doing any kind of search or selection, open, completely open, and with community members involved in that process. I just wanted to say, we have an entire section for public participation. If you would just let us get through the next, just to share, which I know many of you are wondering what our district priorities are, and you, many have asked for that, if you would allow us to please just get through that, and then open, we will open it up again for however many questions that we have at that time.
I do want to ask my question. So I'm Srider from High Street in Acton. First of all, thank you all. I think it is, like many said before me, that you do work hard. I think you spend a lot of time, so I appreciate that. I also want to correct something about the petition, that I am one of the persons who signed the petition. I do not take a position with respect to whether it is Dr. Brand or our school committee. I signed the petition because I wanted to know what happened. So that's just to clarify that. And that leads into my next question, which is, the meeting seems to be going in, in a way, where it is a closed case, that you have an agreement signed with Dr. Brand, nothing can be discussed, it's sealed. I do not want to take that just as an answer that it's a decision done. I think as public, we have a right to know what happened. I do not know what can be done legally or what cannot be done. But I do not want to assume that it is done. I think we have a right to know what happened, why it happened, because if there is no transparency, I'm going to think that there is something really bad. And I don't think you want that to, people to assume that. So I would like to know if you are considering ways to clarify the discussions and provide the information on this amicable separation.
I'm trying to... The document, the separation agreement was already signed by both parties, and neither party pulled out. So it's a binding document at this point. Unless, I, I'm sorry, that it was, we both had an opportunity, time to change our minds, and neither party did. So I understand that some of you feel like Dr. Brand didn't have a choice in the matter, and there was time after the signing for there to be, where the agreement could have been broken.
Again, I think, I think I would like to clarify that. I am not taking a position on either side, who is good or, you know, who had the opportunity. I think you represent us, right? You are the school council representing the citizens. And you also had the opportunity to, you know, before signing the agreement, that made it so difficult for you to talk anything about it.
I understand, and I completely understand. That was just part of the negotiation of the separation agreement, and that was, that was, and rightfully so, that was the decision made, that we would not be allowed to speak about it. The separation agreement itself will be put on, put out on our website, I hope tomorrow, as soon as we can. I don't know that it's going to answer any more questions, but one of the insistence that, one of the things that we insisted on was that that agreement would be made public. But again, I don't, I'm not promising that it's going to answer any more of your questions.
Last time I'll come up, I promise. So not a question, but just a quick comment on the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, Section 22, Paragraphs E and F. The minutes of any executive session, the notes, recordings, or other materials used in the preparation of such minutes, and all documents and exhibits used at the session may be withheld from disclosure to the public in their entirety under Subclause A, blah, 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 as long as it doesn't defeat the law, all that. Types of things to be exempt from disclosure to the public, as would be personnel information, such as materials used in performance evaluation of an individual bearing on his professional competence, provided they are not created by the members of the body for the purposes of the evaluation, and two, materials used in deliberations about employment or appointment of individuals, including applications and supporting materials. So that being said, I don't think any of us were really wanting to ask for all of the personal details that led to the separation agreement. What we would like to know, I think at this point, is if there was an executive meeting held, where are the meeting minutes that had the exact detailed discussions about the situation? As you're able to have it in there by law, and not have it redacted, but also the information on, was there any sort of vote? Who voted? How did they vote? And that information. So I think there is still some information that can be provided to us that is more detailed than what you have already provided, given the situation.
So I will say, and I am going to ask Mr. Mandell to stand up again, but first, before I say that, anything that we can legally release, we will.
Just to be clear, the executive session on May 2nd, I think it was, at which it was contract negotiation with non-union personnel, minutes were taken at that meeting, I was there. And minutes were prepared. When they are approved and released by the school committee, they will be, they will be public. And under the open meeting law, a school, any public body, is supposed to release the minutes, when the purposes for which the executive session was held basically would no longer be a rationale for, for releasing the minutes. And obviously, I'm not, I am not, the minutes have not been released, I cannot, and no one on the school committee can get into the content of the meeting, of that executive session meeting tonight. But you can be assured that the school committee, as part of its usual process, reviews executive session minutes and releases them to the public when it is appropriate to do so, that is, when doing so will not defeat the very reason why you were in an executive session in the first place.
Hi, Mark.
I'm just going to say, is it, would it be possible, at least after the four of you speak, that we could just get into our, our public participation section? No, I'm sorry, the, if we could please get in, if we could please go to the...
We know.
Little bit discombobulated. We'd like to just please go through our priorities and, and share, there are a few of us that have different things to say about it, and then open it up again for public participation. And if any of you would be willing to wait, that would be great. If you feel like this is the time that you need to speak, then please go ahead.
Mark Marlowe from Boxborough. So what I'm seeing here is not a lot of pride. I see less than pride. The, the deal is really good on the other fellow's side, and bad for the taxpayer's side, and you allude to that it was something that was done on his part, or somebody's part, without taking responsibility, but the payout is big. This leads me to believe that person probably wanted to stay, and you probably wanted them to go. I don't see anybody here telling us about that. I think that's wrong. Did you think, when you were signing this agreement, that you'd be sealing the public from the information? Did that cross your minds? I don't, you know, disrespect? Disrespect? I feel totally disrespected by what you guys have done. And to sign an agreement that locks me out from the information is disrespectful. So, you know, that's how I feel.
I'll try to be brief. I have, first of all, my name is David Bearstock. I live in Boxborough, have a son, R.J. Gray. I'm also a middle school teacher in another town, been in education for many years. And so I just wanted to bring into the room the two groups of people that aren't, have been here yet, and I'm very anxious to hear what you guys have to say. And I also just want to say that I have a lot of compassion for where you guys are at right now. I mean, I know you all are doing your best, and you're doing it for the right reasons. And I wish we could all find a way to take a breath, and find a way around this hard place. But the two groups I'm talking about are the students and the faculty. I know as a teacher, that it's very difficult to be in a system when there's chaos at the top. And so I'm wondering what is being communicated to the faculty, and where the faculty are standing in relation to this at this point, what we can know about that? Because I am concerned about how this will affect them, and they then affect our students directly. The other piece is not often stated, and I think it's important, and maybe not obvious, which is that the way that we as adults, and that includes you and Mr. Brand and all of us, conduct ourselves here, impacts the students. It may not happen directly, but it happens. I've seen it a million times. So the fact that we're, that we're having a decision that's made in a way that we probably wouldn't ask, want our students to resolve their conflicts in a way, I'm not saying, I don't know what you know, and it may be if I knew what you know that I'd be right with you. But I think the problem we have right now is that there's a sort of perception that this isn't the kind of decision-making we want to have in an educational institution, where we're supposed to be modeling for our students the kind of citizens we want them to be. So I hope that you guys, I wanted to speak before you talked about your priorities, because I hope that you'll speak to those two things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There, I, our central, okay, I'll just speak to everyone. Our, oh, that's fine, eye contact. Our central office staff went around and met with every school principal, assistant principal, and teachers, in the hopes of having exactly those conversations. Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't meet with the teachers. They went around and they met with all of the staff. I'm sorry, let me, please let me, just, guys, this is not easy. They went around and met with all of the principals at each of the schools, and assistant principals. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sanjeev Biswas from Acton. I have a question which I'm trying to, you know, really make sense of. So what you mentioned, that it was Dr. Brand whose decision it was that to go for the executive session. So my question is that now Dr. Brand is gone, he is not, you know, liable publicly to answer any questions, but here you guys are, you are... any questions, but here you guys are, you are publicly elected officials, and you are supposed to answer the questions. So my question is that why did you guys even go into that situation where, you know, you will be in a position where you will not be able to come back and answer any of these questions, and again and again you'll have to say the same thing? That, you know, you are legally bound by all these legal contracts? So, I mean, that very fact that you guys also chose to go into an executive session and without telling, going into a public session, that tells us the fact that something went wrong. Something was not very public, something was not very transparent. And, you know, even if Dr. Brand chose that, but why did you guys do that? I mean, why didn't you discuss something very publicly before taking such a big decision? Thank you.
Because we as, and that's a very fair question, because we as a committee felt that we wanted to do what was the very best thing for our students, and that doing it this way would be the best thing for our students. And our, and I'm sorry, I know that you don't understand why that was, why we felt this was really the, everything that we do up here is keeping in mind our students and our staff, and trying to do what we think is the best thing. And I understand your frustration in wanting to know why this, but we are here. We are here to listen. I'm going to take you, and then I'm going to ask the rest of you to please wait-
Thank you.
-because we need to move on with the agenda.
I tried to breathe. First of all, thank you. I know you guys probably, as frustrated as we are, and probably more because you are the one that being questioned. And people often say hindsight is 20/20. Having all the information now, seeing all the response you are getting now, will you make the same decision a couple of weeks ago? Will you make the same decision? And if you will not make the same decision, what process should we change, should you change, to avoid that mistake? I know the decision has been made. There is a binding document, we cannot do, you cannot do anything about it, we cannot do anything about it. But to moving forward, at least tell us what process will you introduce to avoid us to get into such a situation again? Thank you. I do appreciate it. I know you guys are very, working very hard, so thank you for taking my place.
So that's a really hard question to answer, because the decisions that we made at the time, we felt like they were the most important and the best decisions. In our summer workshop, we have, we are going to be taking time to discuss the process and discuss as a committee how we can make things better and more open, and realizing that the community really needs more information, and maybe we have to decide how best to do that within the limitations that we have through the Massachusetts legal system. I'm sorry, I'm going to move on to the next section, and there is public participation after that. I would like to go back. I know I started this, but I would like to go back and read our statement of purpose. "The Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee strives to support the district in its vision to provide high-quality educational opportunities that inspire a community of learners by setting and adopting policy, hiring and overseeing the superintendent, and developing a thoughtful budget considering the needs of our students and the fiscal responsibilities of the communities of Acton and Boxboro." And I'm going to ask Mary to-
If people don't want to stay, and here-
Go ahead.
I mean, I, I see a lot of people leaving, and I thought that the objective was to understand what we're going to be doing over the next year. So, no, no, I'm just saying the next step. I mean, there were many steps involved in this, but you, okay, then.
Okay. Okay, so moving on. Our work over the past year or so, which aligns with the district's long-range strategic plan and the fiscal '17-'18 budget that was approved at our recent town meetings, demonstrates our commitment to our values of wellness, equity, and engagement. One of the ways it's really important for us to do this is to continue the district's work around wellness and the challenge-success work that's been ongoing. This is, a lot of work has gone in here. It's very important to us. This includes many of the things folks were talking about earlier, reviewing the existing district homework policy and working with our schools and our district leadership teams around that. It includes looking at our school start times with the district's start time committee and incorporating the community feedback that, through the surveys that have been done, comparing the pros and cons of a single and double-tier elementary busing, because that can impact our school start times, and lead to a final strategy that we are still aiming to implement in the fall of 2018. A lot of this challenge-success work has been spearheaded by Deb Bookus, who's our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and Deputy Superintendent Marie Altieri. I know school committee members have been involved in this initiative, school start times. I think Diane's been on that, Tessa's on it, and Amy's been on it. So there's a lot of continuity and commitment there. We're also committed to continuing to look at the change in schedules that can benefit our junior and senior high, high school students. This is part of the challenge-success method in really eliminating a lot of the stress in the school day for students, and improving our parent and community engagement, which has been going on through the Family Learning Series, and are challenging our notion of success digital newsletters.
So MTSS, that initiative, we received a report a couple of weeks ago. There was a review of our practices to understand where we stood with respect to the MTSS. And to, MTSS is a, is a program where if there are children who are struggling, it's a way of focusing the support for those children as early as possible to help keep them in the mainstream and help keep them away from, from falling farther and farther behind. So the report that we received was, was a study of kind of where we stood with the, with the first level. My understanding is that we're organically, as a district, we've been kind of on that path anyway, and it's just a matter of, of kind of taking the pieces of the program that would, would help us focus those supports in alignment with, with the program. So I very much look forward to implementing that, the Massachusetts-tiered support system, and, and I think it's a wonderful thing for us to be doing.
I just wanted to add really quickly that Deb and Dawn have been, were spearheading that and working diligently on that.
Sorry. I'm going to speak to an initiative that we are going to continue with regarding assessing school climate and school culture. But first, I just want to say something. After two years of working with the people around this table on the initiatives that will shape the future of this district, I can tell you that you will not find 11 individuals who are more hardworking, more knowledgeable, more passionate, and more committed to the students and families of this district. Okay? We hear that you are stunned and frustrated and disappointed. We hear that you want clarity. We hear that you want transparency. It appears we are allergic to transparency. Are our priorities in terms of the direction we want to take this district the same? They're the same. When I first started on the school committee two years ago, Dr. Brand gave me a little red book. It was a little primer on how to be a school committee member, and it taught me, it says in that book that school, school committee members are a bridge between the inner specialized world of schools and the outer world of the community. We know that you feel we have failed to be this bridge, and that we have weakened the social contract and your confidence in us. And this is perhaps the most dissatisfying answer you're going to get tonight. We understand that, and we will work to rebuild it. I think that needs to be said. We are bound by laws and policies we have sworn to uphold, and we must move forward. So the school culture and climate survey, it's, it's an assessment, so it'll, we're going to be implementing a survey tool for the district, and then off of that, develop an implementation plan. There are three tools that are being considered by the senior leadership team and the wellness committee, and they will select the most appropriate tool for the district. But I think that in light of everything that's happened and in light of most recent events, assessing school culture and school climate is going to be a very high priority for us. The committee will also determine what funding is available through grants and budgeting, and if we will pilot the implement, the implementation of the recommended survey in 2017, 2018, or move it up a year. So that's the status of that initiative. Thank you.
It's face and capital.
No, it's assessing, oh.
That's okay. So with respect to the next initiative that will be ongoing and which will be continued through our work over the next year, is assessing the data that we have on elementary school funding and staffing to improve future budgeting and policies. And this goes into the notion of equity that we have now in our long-range strategic plan. So that's going to be another item that will continue over the course of the next year and beyond. I just want to say something really quickly. One of the speakers asked, not just for this, this statement that was prepared in advance in terms of our educational philosophies and priorities, and they asked if we individually could speak to what those might be for us. And I just want to say that over the course of the last 11 years on this, on this committee, it's been a real pleasure to get to know all of the other committee members. And the thing that really has kept me going over the years is the love of children. I've got four kids that have been through the district. And I think the most important thing that we can do as a district, and I think all of the things that you've heard just now speak to that, is really to foster a love of learning. That's what I want our kids to have, because if they can get that love of learning through our schools and through the relationships that they have with the teachers and the other folks in the building, then that's going to carry them through for life. So that's kind of what keeps me going on this committee every day. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I thank you for the question.
And lastly, I will follow up and just say that we are committed to continuing to address the capital needs of the region, including addressing our short-term capital needs in our FY '17 and '18 and future budgets, addressing medium-term capital needs by bundling projects into packages that prioritize needs and efficiencies, and bringing those bundles with detailed cost estimates to Acton and Boxboro Town Meetings for approval, and most certainly continuing to work with the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, on a new building project. The project will include input from the community, a request for design and project management funds brought to Acton and Boxboro Special Town Meetings in December, and if approved, a design process that addresses community input, facility needs, and available resources. I had been planning to chair the building committee, which is fully staffed and set to kick off on June 14th of this year as planned.
So I also would like to just comment to the earlier question about our individual priorities, and, and I'm very much in agreement with Bridget. For me, I think we need a district that provides a positive educational experience. But for me, education is, it's not just the academics. I think the social environment and the support that children get is incredibly important. I, I think of it, a love of learning, I think of joy of learning, and for them to find success, for students to find success, and I don't mean getting As in every course. I mean, finding what really excites them, what, you know, where, where's their passion? Where do they want to learn more? And sparking the curiosity and creativity in all different areas, and providing the support to them that they can achieve that. Thank you. The school committee has been actively engaged in all of these priorities. We remain committed to these priorities. These are district goals. Sorry, we- I'm, I'm sorry, which one did we not do? So Mary was speaking to the school start times, but if you'd like to repeat that or say more about it? Well, we're absolutely committed to that work. We're continuing to move forward. We'll be getting a report in June on what the survey from the community said, and we'll be working toward a solution that would be implemented in September of 2018 for school start times. What was the other piece? The school funding review. Yeah, that's, Bridget spoke to that, but we will continue, and we, we will also be receiving a report in June about that. That's going to be the beginning of a community conversation about the funding and the staffing, particularly across the elementary schools, what it looks like, and what changes potentially need to happen in terms of policy and budgeting to address the differences. I'm sorry, I'm going to, I missed, I missed the last one. School committee has been actively engaged in all these priorities. We remain committed to the priorities to provide high-quality educational opportunities to inspire a community, to inspire a community of learners and develop, engage well-balanced learners through collaborative, caring relationships. And as always, we welcome your participation in any of these initiatives. We are very happy to have any community members that would like to be involved in any of these, in working through these, any of these initiatives. Okay. Now is the time in our agenda when we are opening it up to public participation.
Before, before you do that, could I ask a question about this item on the agenda?
Please.
Okay. So this is a statement of district priorities. I have not been following a lot of the school issues, but I've listened carefully what you've all said. I've looked at the priorities. It appears like these priorities are what the school is currently doing. These are all ongoing priorities that presumably Dr. Brand was leading or involved in. Now, I know you can't speak for Dr. Brand. I'm not asking you to do that. But as his boss, as his employer, he's leading the system. It's been reported that there were major difficulties and differences of opinion. From your perspective, not speaking for him, but speaking for you, I would like to know, you know, did he not really want to foster a love of learning?
Can you release that one?
Did he not want to, was he not, he did not want to provide a positive educational experience, love of learning, joy of learning, for children to find success? Did he not believe in that? Because there had to be, of all these things that you've just gone through, he had to disagree with those, because that's what you said in your public statement, that you had a difference of opinion on. And I'd like to know, not speaking for him, I don't want to hear what his disagreements were from his point of view, don't paraphrase him, but as his boss, I want to know, how were you dissatisfied that he wasn't following these?
Alan, I cannot answer the question, because Dr. Brand is not here-
Alan, I cannot answer the question, because Dr. Brand is not here to, I'm going to finish my statement, please. Dr. Brand is not here to explain what his differences are with the school committee. I am telling you that these are the commitments of the school committee and the district. These district initiatives, we believe very strongly in. And I cannot sit up here and tell you what he, his vision or differences are. He is the only person that can answer that, and he is not here this evening.
Okay, but that's not what I'm asking you. I'm not asking you to tell me what Dr. Brand's visions...
Alan, I just, I'm really sorry. I'm really sorry. I cannot answer Dr. Brand's...
Let me clarify my question. All right. I'm not asking you to tell me what Dr. Brand's philosophies are. I don't, that's immaterial to my question. As his supervisor, as his boss, I want to know which are the priorities that you have that he did not agree with?
By saying that, then I'm telling you the things that he does not agree with, that we do agree with, and that is therefore stating his ideas. He is not here, and this is the, there's just no more I can say about that. And I am sorry, and I understand your frustration. I understand that you want an answer as to why, what those differences are. I don't know what else to say, except that this was his, his choice wasn't to not be here this evening. And so I just can't say anymore about that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good, good evening. Again, like many, my name is Shuang Kong Patnang. Like many other prior speakers, I thank you, many of you were former colleagues of mine for serving on school committee. But I do want to follow up what Alan has just asked you. As you recall, when I was on school committee, I always asked about minority report. We elected you to guide the school district. You have every right to make a decision in terms of a policy and directions. And apparently, if there's a disagreement, that means, as an educator, as a leader in our school district still until June 30th, Dr. Brand took a different approach. And he is not the decision maker, you are the decision maker. But all the taxpayers and parents and the concerned citizens of Acton and Boxborough, I think, deserve to know what's different. You do not have to say, "Dr. Brand wants to go to B." You just tell us you want to go to A, and there's disagreement on that aspect. So at least we know what area the disagreement occurs, because we have many, many big projects coming up, including searching for new superintendent. Without resolving all this disagreement, without having an open discussion about this disagreement, we really have no place that can guide us where to go. Thank you.
So I'm just going to say that there is not disagreement among the committee. The committee feels strongly about all of these goals and these priorities, and we will continue to move them forward.
Good evening.
I think that was the question.
Oh. Sorry, are you ready? My name is Amy Yadav. I live on 4 Smart Road in Acton, and I have two daughters that marry in. I have a question about the priorities. One of my suspicions has to do with school choice. No one has mentioned it at all, and I'd like to know if school choice was a priority for this committee, and if Dr. Brand was aware of that as a priority when he was hired.
I'd say that, oh, you want to go ahead? Yeah.
I was on the hiring committee to hire Dr. Brand, and that was a very specific question that we did ask him. What was his, and I can't remember exactly how it was phrased, but what was his, how did he feel about school choice? It may have been the phrasing. And at the time, he was very open about it and open to learning more about it and supportive of it, as I remember.
So you would say that he, it's not an issue in terms of his leaving or the disagreement? I'm just trying to figure out, like hypothetically, why something would be kept a secret? And it just seems like that's a big issue in Acton, and that's why people moved to this town? And I just can't help but feel like that might be a part of what is going on, since no one's talked about it.
The school committee has, is in full support of school choice.
Okay.
Continuing school choice.
Continuing school choice. So I think that does answer my question. Thank you.
I graduated from AB, class of 2015. As a former student of the Acton-Boxborough School District, it greatly distresses me to see that the people who determine the educational and operational procedures of this school district have such dichotomous views that the immediate partying of ways was necessary. Not only does this have a profound effect on the taxpayers, but it also has a very negative effect on the students. We are the ones going through this school district. We are the ones who are supposed to be nurturing and developing. If this so-called nurturing environment is so toxic and distrustful, how can you expect the students to grow? If community leaders can't even agree on which way to go without the help of a legal contract and a team of lawyers, how are the students supposed to have faith in its community and its leaders? You have indicated that you will incorporate greater public participation, but that was the case for the last hire, so clearly it was not enough to ensure this alignment of philosophy. What has happened has already happened. But moving forward, how will you ensure that these differences in philosophies are caught earlier, so that these drastic measures do not have to be taken on such short notice again?
I hear your concerns. I don't have an answer for you right this minute. That's definitely something that will be part of the conversation when we move on to talking about next steps and the way that handle the future searches. And I, and I can just say, I was not on the hiring committee. I wasn't on the school committee at the time that these decisions were made. So if anyone else that is, that would like to add to that, you can, or you don't have to.
My name's Jen Pratt. I am an Acton resident, 97 Newtown Road, and I'm also a faculty member in the district. So I just wanted to come up and say that the faculty actually heard about, heard the announcement the same way the public did. We got an email. We were not notified by anybody else. So it was quite shocking to me and many of my colleagues. I actually sit on the superintendents council with the superintendent this year. He's created this new community of people across the district that he's trying to gather information and also spread information in a different way. Just by sitting on that committee and by all of the other experiences that I've had, I feel as though the district was moving in a good direction under his leadership. So it is shocking to me to have this news brought up. So I guess I'm wondering, with the educational and operational differences between you and Dr. Brand, it seems as though many of you are talking about your educational overarching philosophy, lifelong learners, social and emotional well-being, all of those things. But I didn't hear a lot about the operational philosophies that you have, and I'd like to hear a little bit about that, which I believe that you said that you were going to talk about earlier. And then my last question is just about the transparency, about the separation agreement and all of that information. If both parties were in agreement to disclose some of that information, is that something that could happen going forward?
Yeah, so the separation agreement is going to be posted, and hopefully we can get it done tomorrow. And I hope it answers some questions. I fear that it probably won't. What I can say is that the way the information was released was not our decision. And I can also say that there have been a number of groups, such as the one you described, that I think that we all agree are extremely important, and we would definitely support continuing that, including the increased opportunities to have parents and central office staff meetings and so forth.
Are you willing to talk a little bit about your operational philosophies?
Amy's getting tired. You know, we haven't talked about it explicitly a whole lot, but I think a lot of the things we agree on is that when we are making changes like school start time, like addressing the multi-tiered system of supports, things like that, that it involves community input through being on committees and through surveys and community forums, so that we can get as much of your input as possible, and that those committees and input also include the staff and faculty. And then, you know, operationally, we want to be able to achieve all of these objectives, which is a great deal for one community, but achieve it in a way that the staff can function in a positive way, that we're not overloading any particular staff person, and so people have different areas that they can lead in, but that there's not so much on their shoulders that will actually fall short on these goals.
And I just wanted to add to that, that we are committed to a lot of these initiatives, doing them in making decisions and moving them forward in a timely manner.
Hi, my name's, hi, my name's Angie So, and some of you may know my name, because I'm one, the only incumbent candidate for the school committee in the last round. So I want, was, we got an email last Thursday at 4:00, and there's immediately a meeting of school committee at 7:00. Just, I believe there's a lot of time, a lot of us doesn't really have time to respond. So there is a little turnout, and I was there, I was trying to manage to get there. And with, a lot of people raised concern, question, but it wasn't really answered. So I want to know, because this is a huge decision, and before you make that decision, you must have seen, sensed the differences between school committee and the superintendent. Was there any third party brought in to try to resolute the differences? And what process or effort that the school committee has been done? Because this is a huge decision to us.
I would say that any, any information that can, we can release further to answer those questions, we will. I just don't know exactly what we can and cannot, and there was no media, I can definitely say there was no mediator that came in.
Okay.
And I did want to say one more thing. I understand the timeliness of the release and that you're not, that there are some concerns about that. We just didn't have a lot of, we didn't have a lot of say or decision, we weren't really able to make that decision. So I apologize that it came out so late.
And so, like a prompt unilateral decision like this is going to increase the difficulty in when we are trying to find the next qualified candidate. As you know, there's, a lot of people know, there's an article going around, it's getting harder to find superintendent in Massachusetts. And I'm really concerned on the time that we will be able to find the next qualified candidate. So, I was, and really honestly, that for this process, and is there any policy or process we will be able to request from the school committee to establish so this kind of process will not be happening again?
I'm hoping to have that discussion in our summer workshop meeting to come up with some better, clearer guidelines amongst the committee for ways that we can improve the process. That will be on the agenda.
Okay. And my last question is the philosophy, because if the philosophy doesn't disclose to the parents as well as the students, and it's going to create the pressure and, you know, among the school, especially you guys are the highest leader of the education. So we really would like to see a clear philosophy from the school committee as, as moving forward. Thank you very much.
You have a lot of very important decisions coming up, and what I want to see is a completely different attitude. I don't think you realize how secretive you appear to be. I'm choosing my words diplomatically, because I don't really understand, and I think a lot of people in this room feel the same way, what can possibly require a secrecy agreement if it's a difference of educational philosophy or operational procedures? And by the way, throughout this evening, you have stated that you cannot answer questions because you're bound by disagreement. Well, you made this agreement. You didn't have to, nobody twisted your arms. Even if Dr. Brand, and of course, I don't know this, had wanted one, doesn't mean that you had to agree to it. It took the two of you to agree to generate a separation agreement, which then precludes you from answering any questions. It didn't have to happen. Now, a couple of other points. To my previous question on what was the stated purpose for the executive session, the answer was negotiations. Well, that was not the starting point of whatever problems they were between you, the school committee, and Dr. Brand. You didn't come into a school committee meeting one day and say, "We're going to go in the executive session, the negotiations with the superintendent." There had to be a previous amount of discussion, which nobody seems to know about. You answered this gentleman's question of why did you go into this executive session and secrecy and so forth by saying that, quoting you, "We," meaning, I assume, the school committee, "felt that was best for the students." Great. How did you reach that conclusion? Did the 11 of you communicate it in some mysterious way that I don't know about? Or did you do this in an open meeting? You didn't do it in an open meeting, because we would know about it. That's what I mean by a totally different way of doing things. You may not like it, but we're going to hold you to it.
Thank you.
One, I don't know the, what you guys, how you hire, but would you mind raising your hand if you're part of the hiring committee?
We're all part of the hiring committee.
You're all part of it, okay. So, perfect, perfect. I have my question now.
We will be a subcommittee of it. But we were not all part of the hiring committee of Dr. Brand, because some of us have not, were not on the committee at the time.
Fair, fair. All right. Would three of you now please tell me and everybody else what questions you will ask when interviewing the next candidate that were not asked of Dr. Brand? Thank you.
So that's a really great question, and that is a question that we are hoping to address as we move through after public participation, although it is getting quite late at night. Please let me just finish my statement. That is not something that we can say as individuals. We will be having an open discussion about exactly how we want to go about the next hiring process. hiring process, and we're happy to answer that question at that time, but none of us can sit here and say, "This is the question that we will ask," because we have not had a discussion about it.
I did not ask that question, I'm sorry. I asked, right now, given everything that you know, what question do you think you would like to ask that you hadn't asked, or if you weren't part of it, you, you know, you wouldn't even have one, but would you like to ask now? I'm not asking what questions you plan to, and make the list up, just what question would you ask now that hadn't been asked before to your knowledge? That's what I'm asking. Not what questions you actually will ask. I understand you have to go through a formal process and come up with a list, an agreement, but as individuals, what would you like to know that you hadn't found out before now? That has nothing to do with any agreement, that's looking forward, what would you do differently?
I actually understand now, I'm looking at my fellow school committee members, I don't know if...
For me, that, I can't answer that right now, you know, we've put in an enormous amount of time and work, and honestly, my brain isn't there yet, we need to get there, but it's part of the process. And you may not like that answer either, but I can't come up, I can't, I don't even know what questions we asked three years ago, so I have to go back and look at all of that material and then think about how I want to move forward, and that's...
Anybody else have a different answer?
I have the same answer, I was on the hiring committee three years ago, I can't remember exactly how many questions we asked, I can tell you a little bit about the process.
No, I'm sorry, it's okay, we have shorter time, I was just, I mean, I'm not asking what you did before, I'm asking what you would ask next time, that's all, very simple.
Well, you asked what would be different, and I can't answer that without considering to think about it.
All right, let's adjust it. What would you ask now? That would be something that, based on what you understand now, what would be a great question to ask the next candidate?
I would ask for each of our priorities that we're interested, how that individual envisioned moving that work forward and getting it done in a timely way.
Okay, thank you. And just a short question, what is the penalty if you violate your agreement and walk away now? What is the penalty if you tell us about the agreement?
I have to ask Mr. Mandell to speak to that.
First of all, the agreement, as I understand it, is gonna be posted for the public, so everyone will know exactly what the content of the agreement is. When you see it, you'll see what the school committee's obligations are under the agreement, also where Dr. Brands are. If the school committee were to violate any of its obligations under the agreement, they would be, they would be vulnerable, that is to say, the school district, the acting box of regional school district, would be vulnerable to a breach of contract lawsuit, and that's why they are determined not to violate any of the commitments that they've made in the contract.
Hi, Eileen Matarisi, Six Madison Lane. I have a lot of different thoughts streaming through my head, one of which starts with, I don't feel like I'm actually sitting at the same meeting as everyone else, because when we're talking about those priorities, I have the great benefit of sitting on inner school council with Dr. Brand, and all we do is talk about those priorities, over and over again. And he, at no point ever, in a group of 15 or 20 people every other month, has ever said publicly that he has disagreed with them, in my presence, ever. I've even taken minutes at the meeting. So, this, this is really concerning to me, that as you keep going forward, talking about priorities, there's a roomful of people here, and I'm not sure if we're talking about priorities, because in that release agreement, it says philosophies. You guys read a lot, you publish a lot, I respect all of you, I call many of you friends, Diana, I really respect your integrity and honesty, but I have to be honest, I'm really left, like, scratching my head here, because with everything that you do, all the i's and all the t's that you cross and dot, and all the things that you publish, and all the wordsmithing and professionalism that you put out there to all of us, this just doesn't make sense to me. What I'd like to see is two things, I'd really like to see your philosophy, the one we keep referencing in the separation, operational philosophy. He wrote 137-page document on his year at work, I don't know how many people in this room have ever done that in their life, I know I haven't, but there's nothing, I can't find anything, I scoured the school committee website for a section on your philosophies, so everyone standing in this room could actually read them with their own two eyes, and I really would respect the idea of you actually taking the time to put those in writing, because you've done such a great job putting other things in writing and making them available to us publicly. You keep talking about this public interest and public faith and public participation, except for when we release our superintendent, which is, again, a conflict that I'm having trouble with. And I don't have trouble with you releasing him if it's all agreeable, that's not the problem, it's the transparency that's the problem. The agreement isn't a problem, you both agreed to it, that's the end of the story. But the other thing that's really troubling to me as a taxpayer, is we're paying a high fee for a very talented attorney to protect you from us. And that is not an insult, that's just a fact?
I, I understand. I absolutely understand what you're saying, and we're paying an attorney to protect this entire district, so that we do not make a mistake that opens us up to a breach of contract lawsuit, because we are not lawyers here, with the exception of Bridgette, but, yeah, not her area of expertise, and the only way that we can ensure that we don't sit up here and say something that will put this entire district at risk, is to actually refer to our lawyer, because that's how serious this is, and that's how complicate, not complicated, how technical the details can be. And honestly, I can sit up here and make one dumb mistake, or 12, or maybe another 12, and, you know, I'm just not comfortable taking that chance. And I agree with you, I wish we didn't have to be in this, I wish we didn't have to have had him, but the fear is that we don't want to do something that would put the district in harm's way. And the other thing that you said earlier, I wanted to say, I think what you are asking for is probably a really great idea, and it, and I've written it down, and I'm hoping that maybe at our, well, I'm hoping to put it on our agenda for our summer workshop. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have one more question. If you could either explain to me, or at least at your summer workshop, explore the checks and balances process, if indeed this process has to be private and have executive session, and it calls for that, that's understandable. However, the idea that the principals, other high-ranking employees in the system, FinCom, were in no way aware and equally, you know, sideswiped by this news, that's really concerning to me, that there was no other high level, even if you couldn't include the general public, but that there was no other consultation, or at least not one we know of. Was there one, and we just don't know of it? Or was, did it only remain between the 11 of you?
So, no, we couldn't do that because of the nature of the, of the executive, because of the nature and the rules around executive session. I understand, and I think that, again, this summer, we are hoping to take a hard look at the process and go, and decide as a committee where we could, what we could have done differently, where we could have been more transparent, and what, at what point we do that disregarding other, well, I'm not gonna say anything else, because I can't.
That's, that's fair, Amy.
So, but that is definitely, I hear you, and I, we hear all of you and your frustration, and, you know, this is something that we're taking and want to have a discussion about.
Well, I respect, I respect all of your jobs, your time here, and I really do know that you put in a great deal of effort, so I applaud you for that. And I'm sorry Dr. Brand's not here to hear this for himself, but I'd actually personally like to thank him for leaving Acton better than he found it.
Hi, my name is Anupam Mishra, I live in Acton. I'll start by saying, all of you have a hard job, so I want to thank you for that. I also want to share the frustration of everybody here, I don't want to repeat that, but I very much share that. The question I want to ask is, now let's think forward, we have to hire a new school in charge. Now, the problem is, Acton has become toxic. We will not be able to attract a good talent, and it's not because of Acton, it's not because of the faculty, it's not because of the students, I'm sorry to say, it's because of you people, right? Because anybody who is serious, who wants to come to Acton as a new superintendent will say, "My God, I don't know what to expect," because committee would not be able to told me, as you told us just now, why the earlier superintendent was fired, so the guy would not have any clue what to expect, right? So, what I see...
So, I don't think that, I have to stop, because I think we have a fantastic district, and I understand everyone's frustrations, and that we're here having this conversation, but I don't, I do not think it's fair to suggest that our district is toxic, so...
Yeah, no, I agree, and I'm happy that we have a fantastic school district, and that's why frankly, we choose to live here, right? So, I do agree we have a good school district, but all of you will agree that our school district is a notch below where it was before May 2nd. Would you agree that, or not, right? We are a step below, just because there's less transparency here, right?
I think that if you went and you actually looked at school committees and districts across the state, that you would find there are, there have been and are many similar situations that happened across the state. This is not something that Acton has just done, or the committee has just done, and no one else has. That doesn't make it easier for anyone to hear or to feel better about it, or anything else, but I'm just trying to say, this happens, this has happened and happens in a lot of other districts.
No, I, yeah, I accept that, and, you know, probably worst thing might have happened, and, you know, again, you know, all I'm trying to say is, we are slightly bad, however small, infinitely smaller bad situation we are in, but we are slightly in fair situation. So, my question to all of you, and hypothetical question, is if it comes, turns out that we are not able to attract a good talent, because people think that there's something going on and they don't feel comfortable coming to Acton, would you consider stepping aside if that becomes a problem in hiring a good talent?
If it becomes a problem where everybody is, where there is some issue, where we can't attract a good candidate, fine.
Thank you.
Hello, Nancy Vicaro, Acton Mass. I'm really trying to address what's coming up in the agenda, because at this point, I think all of our concern could be, should be, how is this going to affect our students, and how is it going to affect the budget? And my daughter's a senior next year, and I just want to know that in this interim time, how is that gonna affect the day-to-day operations and the students going to this school? And I, and just, I want to make sure that that, I know obviously that's your top priority too, you all have kids in the school, I really appreciate what you're trying to do here, and I'm not gonna second guess what happened. My main concern now is, you know, how's this gonna affect the students, and is there something else in the budgets that's gonna be impacted because of this decision?
I would like to just make a statement about the, wow, continue, how things will continue. We have an amazing support staff in the central office. Our principals, our assistant superintendent, super, so sorry, our, it's been a really long six days.
I understand.
I've been sitting in this chair for six, I mean, I've been at the chair for six days, I, I'm gonna try to get my thoughts together. The support staff, the assistant superintendents, the head, the director of facilities, all, the deputy superintendent, all of the positions, these people have been working unbelievable hours on every one of these things. And I don't know how best to assure you, except to say, this district is in, is going, will continue to function better than ever, because of the amazing talent that we have already in our district, with our principals, and in our support staff, and all of our different central office leaders. And we, we, oh, and then this, I'm sorry, and then the next piece is that we, we want to get into the specifics about how to proceed, I mean, tonight is, it is getting really late, I'm hoping that at least we can get to a place where we can have a conversation, so that next Thursday, Tuesday, May 30th, we can start having a positive conversation about how to move forward.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Coppely, 014 Isaac Davis Way. So, a couple of things. I pulled Glenn's contract that's online, and trying to get a handle, and I think it might help the people understand, if you can speak to this. It says specifically reasons for termination. So, was he terminated, or did he resign? Neither, or neither?
It was a mutual parting.
I see. So, we can set aside then these items, may terminate this contract anytime without further obligation by a majority vote for any of the following reasons: inefficiency, incapacity, incompetence, conduct unbecoming to a superintendent, insubordination, or other good cause, and then goes on for other good cause. So...
Yes, he was not terminated for cause.
Not, not for any of those, not for a good cause, nor did he resign, so...
He did resign, and we agreed to the resignation.
So, there should be no penalty, if it's under the resignation clause, there should be no penalty for release or resignation by the superintendent from this contract. Provided no resignation shall become effective until the close of any school year in which this contract is in effect, or 180 days notification from the superintendent, blah-blah. So, that's a concern, I think, to some folks in terms of the monetary commitment that's been made. And then there's something else I need to ask.
He resigned, he, his, he, through his lawyer, asked to negotiate a separation with the school committee, that was held in executive session as was proper, and the separation agreement, which you'll see when it's posted tomorrow or whenever, that is, supersedes his employment agreement. So, all of the specific provisions in there don't necessarily apply at this point, but, but absolutely, he resigned, he initiated the negotiation discussion, and he was not terminated either, he was not terminated by the school committee either for cause or without cause, because it was a resignation that was negotiated.
Thank you. So, when the state implemented its new evaluation system a few years ago, it seemed like it was attempting to have a certain level of consistency in evaluating staff, principals, and the superintendent. So, here's the crux of the matter, I know some people alluded to this earlier. In, at its core, I'd like to know, and people would feel more comfortable, if Glenn had a fair shake, meaning this, I processed an evaluation personally last year, for some reason, it's not yet on the, on the website, now, not mine, but the superintendent's evaluation is not available. And from a public standpoint, they don't have much to go by, it's not there, I looked last, I looked last night, I didn't see it, maybe I'm looking in the wrong place.
It's in the packet, in the packet.
Well, I didn't, I didn't look in that packet, but here's what I'm getting at. There's a compilation that's done, as we know, the chair writes up a compilation of all our individual opinions and thoughts. But my understanding is, that compilation, as well as all of the individual evaluations, are public record, so they should be available to the public. So, my question is this, is there anything else that Glenn was provided in terms of an evaluation, other than what the school committee members provided, so that he could in fact improve, if you will? Because honestly, there must have been, I know you can't get into the details, there had to be some disconnect along the way. had to be some disconnect along the way, because you wouldn't act imprudently and on spur of a moment just say, "Sorry, you're out of here," for no reason. So there must have been some give and take along the way. So is there a document that outlines beyond the evaluation, because my simple impression from last year was that it was fairly positive, and a lot of people here are concurring somewhat directly and indirectly that that was the case? So it's, so the question is fairly simple.
I got you, Mike. I said, as stated earlier, we will release everything that we possibly can around this, but I guess I'll have to refer to Dave about anything that is outside of that, so, yes.
Yeah, I guess I'm asking, prior to the agreement, right? So some agreement was signed recently-
Yes.
Was there anything else-
Yeah, we will release-
Anything and everything?
Yes, we will release whatever we can, under, whatever we legally can. We are absolutely committed to sharing as much information as we legally can.
Okay, and then lastly, just from a purely subjective standpoint.
Mike, you're really kind of pushing the time here, but it's like four minutes now.
Okay. Can you extend this time, please? So here's, so here's the question. Are you all comfortable that Glenn was given a fair opportunity to improve, alter, rectify, modify his behaviors to better align with your philosophies, so that we wouldn't be in this predicament? That's, that's the question. I know you can't speak for everyone, but feel free.
We are a committee, and we, yes.
Everyone's comfortable with that.
Unless there is someone who has a dissent? Yes, we were. We are.
All right, thank you. Alan Nichelm again. So two statements, I guess. I'd like the, I'd like the school committee to not vote on any plan until all the information that we need as a public has been released. I did a document request on Monday, there's 10 business days, I got an email saying that the school committee would comply with the document request, I've requested copies of everything. So in 10 business days, I will have documents, and I'm asking that no vote for any course of action happen until those documents have been disseminated to the public, so that people have a chance to read them and, you know, know what's going on before any votes are taken. That was the concern about having a vote tonight. So I don't know when your next meeting is, or the meeting after that, or the meeting after that, but I would ask you, in fairness, not to schedule any votes until those documents have been released. You want to release them in five days, then, you know, that's fine, but if it's going to take you 10 days, then no votes within the next couple of weeks.
So I want to be really clear. We are committed to releasing all documents that we legally can release.
I understand.
Okay? And we will do that as, okay, the minutes will not be ready until they're voted in executive, the executive session minutes will be voted on the June 8th meeting. I cannot sit here and tell you that the school committee will not take any other actions or votes on what we need to do to make sure that we move this district forward until you feel satisfied with whatever documentation you get. And I'm sorry, we just have to move forward.
Okay, so-
We're really, it's, a lot of you are, not a lot of you, taking an awful long time, that we just need to really keep it to the two minutes, because a lot of people did stick to the two minutes, and maybe didn't get to say everything that they wanted to, and it's not fair for a few to take as long as they want.
Okay, well, that's why I've come up multiple times in different sections of the meeting, so I'm not violating the rule. So that's my request. I want to just again say, so people are clear, that the school committee is the one who has agreed to this confidentiality clause, and probably to make it mutual, and I want to ask specifically, was the settlement agreement that was drafted, was that drafted by the school committee, given to Dr. Brand for response, or was that drafted by Dr. Brand's side, given to the school committee for response? And did the draft include the confidentiality clause?
No, the draft doesn't include a confidentiality clause, I think we've sent, said this 15 times. It's, if it had a confidentiality clause, we couldn't post the agreement in the next couple of days. We're going to post it, so no, it doesn't have a confidentiality agreement. No, I'm going to answer your, your other que-
The agreement is confidential, I mean, does, are the parties barred from speaking? Is there a confidentiality agreement of the, between the two parties, and was that in the contract? I mean, it's, it must have been, because it's been referred to.
Since it hasn't been posted yet, I don't feel tonight that I can give you every detail, but you will see, when it's posted, if that's tomorrow or Friday, you will see exactly what the school committee has committed to and Dr. Brand have committed to, and I, I don't know you, but I think you will conclude that it did not include any kind of blanket confidentiality agreement, but there are certain restrictions on what each side can say about the other, and you'll see when it's posted.
Okay, I will wait till tomorrow. And my final comment-
Or whenever, I don't know if it's tomorrow or-
Okay, well, within 10 days, as per my document request. And my final comment is, I am, as I said before, the publisher of Acton Forum. I invite the public to send me a text, if they have any comments that they want to make off the record. I will maintain confidentiality, and my phone number is 978-621-4207. I have heard from some people, I will maintain strict confidentiality, and people can do that if they feel necessary. Thank you.
I'm Laura Krieger, Washington Drive in Acton. I want to say first that I've read and listened to hundreds of comments and opinions, and I've worked a little bit with Dr. Brand myself, and there's been not one negative comment about him or his work, which is unheard of, about anybody's work. And many have concerns about possible questionable practices leading to this situation, and as a district, if we ever want to attract good talent, we need to be scrupulous about the process. And according to a letter from the assistant, an assistant attorney general, we have violated the law in the past, in 2014 we did. So this is a, you know, to have us continue to question this is a problem. And when Dr. Brand signed this agreement, and you signed it with him, he didn't know we had this kind of support. There was no reason for us to, you know, show up like this. And I understand that contracts can be voided if both parties agree. So if he were willing to renegotiate and to void his contract, would you? And the other thing is, if not, do you plan to reinstate the previous qualifications requirements for a superintendent? It used to require a PhD, we've removed that somehow. I don't know another district who doesn't require that, but somehow we've lowered our standards, and as we're going to begin looking again, can we raise them back up to what they should be?
So to your first question, I don't think we intend to renegotiate with Dr. Brand. I don't think he wants that, I don't think we want that. To your second question, we just haven't discussed the process at all, the beginning of that discussion is the next section of our meeting, and it will continue at subsequent meetings until we're done. So we, we need to have those conversations.
Have any of you reached out to him to say, after seeing this, would you reconsider your resignation?
I have not, I don't know if others have.
So you don't, you're just guessing that he wouldn't want to come back?
Okay. I know he made a mutual agreement with us, that's what I know.
Hi, I'm Scott Smires from 382 Central Street. First, I just have a brief statement about your philosophies and priorities. I think one of them should be, when you have a new mandate coming from the state, there's, it seems like a lot of these meetings are, oh, well, here's something we have to sign, the state says we have to sign it. Just please question that. The State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is not necessarily in line with what our philosophies here are in Acton, and I wouldn't, I think we should have local control here at the school committee, and not worry about what the state is threatening the local districts. Second, my questions are maybe for the attorney, but I wanted to find out if the attorney that's here tonight is the same one that helped draft Superintendent Brand's original contract, and now did also help review the separation agreement. So I'm looking for some continuity, was it his, himself, or his firm that's been working with the school committee for these years?
To answer the simplest thing first, I did not draft Dr. Brand's employment agreement. He indulged me for 30 seconds. I represented the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District from the late 1970s until the mid 1990s, when one of my younger colleagues, Peter Ebb, became the counsel for the school district, and at that time, the school committee of the town of Acton. And he represented the school system for many years, but there was a hiatus period of a, of a number of years when we were, my firm was not doing the legal work for the school. And at some point, I think a couple of years ago, but I'm not sure exactly when, my younger partner, Peter Ebb, was re-engaged by the school district. The reason that I am here is that he, he had a very serious illness in the last two months, and so, Tessa, I know how you feel, because she's, she gets elected and she's been having to face this. I had actually formally retired from my firm on December 31st, but needed to step in on this matter in, in late, really in late March, or April, or wherever it was, April, I guess, last month, because Peter was ill, and in, he may have come home from the hospital, but he's been very sick for about two months. And so I can't even tell you if he was involved in Dr. Brand's employment agreement, but I don't think that he was. I was the attorney representing the school committee, dealing with Dr. Brand's lawyer in negotiating the separation agreement. And so the answer is, I am certainly responsible, along with Dr. Brand's lawyer for being the lawyers, obviously the parties, the school committee and Dr. Brand have the final say in what they're willing to agree to or not agree to in a, in any agreement, including a separation agreement, but certainly, I not only helped draft, but advised the school committee on what it was in the best interest of the school district for them to agree to or not agree to.
Okay, so, and the separation agreement, I learned while waiting in line here, is, supersedes all the other contracts, that's how it was written, even though we haven't seen it.
Yeah, 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 I mean, effectively, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of provisions, obviously, in the employment agreement, that, that either have effectively been changed or just don't apply, because he's, because he's resigned on the terms outlined in the separation agreement.
And how, if he's still under contract through the end of June, why isn't he at this meeting? I mean, it seems like he's been at every school committee meeting I've ever been to.
That is not a question that I, that's not a question that I could answer.
That's not part of the separation agreement, that he asked to work until the end of June?
No, 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 absolutely not.
He was, he was welcome to come to this meeting and chose not to. I would just note that the superintendents aren't actually required to come to school committee meetings-
That was my next question.
They're invited to come to them, it's our meeting.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessica Anders from Boxborough. I was just wondering if you guys could talk a little bit more about how you have resolved philosophical differences in the past among yourselves and, between yourselves and superintendent, or how you might in the future? It seems to me that whoever we hire next is not going to be 100% aligned with you on every issue, and I imagine you're not always aligned yourselves. I feel like if it took three years to surface this misalignment, then not knowing anything about the situation, it seems like it might have been a smaller disagreement, or someone changed their minds, and there might have been more time spent trying to resolve it before you guys parted ways.
I would say that what we need to be doing is having more in-depth conversations, so that we understand how, you know, how we are looking at all of these priorities, philosophies, initiatives, and how they will be implemented.
So does that mean that you guys didn't know you were misaligned on some key aspect until recently, or it's not that someone changed their mind or something changed?
It just, it took time for some of these things to show up, yes. Yeah.
And it's, it just seems strange again to me that there's such a big misalignment that it took three years to figure out, and you guys don't feel like you can tell us? I know you said before that you can't speak for Dr. Brand, and telling us what his opinions or philosophies would be, but you can't identify in any general term, like where your, where the misalignment occurred?
Not without violating the separation agreement.
Hello, school committee, my name is Elise Jacobson, and I have two children in the schools, I have a high schooler, and I have a third grader in Miriam, and this is her teacher of last year. My question is very specific, I prepared a statement, but I don't feel after hearing everyone else's comments that it's in any way going to help move anything forward. I'm curious, as a professional, a social worker, and someone who worked with Dr. Brand on the wellness committee this year, specifically about the period of time in March and April, which I know from my conversations with him, was a time when there were student screenings taking place at the junior high and high school, specifically around implementing your wellness policy. And I can assume, I know I might not be accurate, but I can assume that this is an operational difference, because clearly, your philosophies seem to be in line, but how you work together to implement policy could obviously bring up issues. And my question is, which I hope you can answer, was there any kind of issue that arose during those screenings which troubled the school committee and their implementation? And my second question, if you can answer the first, was, was this ever done in the Acton-Boxborough schools before, offer a screening with outside mental health professionals in the schools? And if it has been done before, and you thought it was useful, would you do it again?
So I don't believe there were any issues with the implementation of that. I don't actually know if we've used outside screeners, I mean, I think we have maybe on individual students, but not the population, the way this new approach has gone. I will say, I think we all have a lot of respect for Riverside, and the work that they do with our district, with many districts. I was actually at a meeting recently at the Department of Public Health with someone who leads suicide prevention work there, and they, the state actually pays for an organization, for Riverside specifically, to come into a lot of districts, so they're endorsed by the state, I don't think we've had any issue with that.
So you would do it again?
Yes.
Okay. This was an attempt to try to contextualize, and it's not apparently reaching a conclusion for me, but I appreciate your willingness to bring in outside professionals, and he was very pleased afterward to realize that there were a number of students that benefited. So thank you.
Hi, how are you? I'm Julia Shear from 46 Quarry Road. At first, I want to thank you, these are all volunteer jobs, and if I ask myself, I don't think I can do what you do, spend all this time and, you know, all these late nights, especially this period of time. Anyway, so I think because of the untransparency, so there's going to be a lot of speculations about what is the discrepancy between you and Dr. Brand. And referring to the point, one of your school committee just mentioned that you said, oh, in the future directions, you don't want to just like, I just want to get As. I don't know who, you made that comment, but I think- I don't know who you made that comment, but I think I heard about it. And that leads me to think if that was a, some sort of a alignment between you and the Dr. Brand, especially under the circumstance, these recent happened unfortunate event of a student body. But I feel like I have to, I don't usually make public speeches because I'm not that kind of person, but because Asians are not appropriately represented in this committee, school committee, I feel like I'm going to regret if I don't make that comment. So I want to tell you that my son, who is tenth grade, Jonathan Gong, he is just exactly one of that kind of student. He wants all As. And I'm not a tiger momma, get gun behind him, say, you go get all As. And he said, oh, I don't know if I can do another two years, this is too hard. I said, hey, you can drop a class, you know? I don't care. He said, no, I don't. I don't want to drop a class. I think he feels like he wanted to do it. He feels like that's a fitness for him. Just every ethnic background has, by generations and generations of evolution, has their strength and has their weakness. And I think as a school committee, because we have a lot of Asian in this community, and we have our strengths, and other ethnic background has their ethnic strengths, has their strengths. And I just wanted, some of the ethnic background are very athletic in percentage-wise, and that is because generation, generations of evolution, not just the one person accidentally from one family. An Asian has certain other traits by from where we're coming from, what our culture is. So I just wanted to, you school committees, when you're making decisions, when you're talking to school leaderships, bearing in mind, being very open-minded about our Asian student families' background. We wanted the best of West and East. We wanted that combinations. So I, so I'm not saying discounting, you say, oh, don't want all As or A's, just like a soccer team want to make a varsity team. They want to have that fitness, a physical fitness. And someone wanted their fitness, a mental fitness. And there's nothing wrong with it. We should all be open-minded, you know? I just feel like I have to say.
I just wanted to say, yeah, I just want to say, first of all, thank you so much for standing up and saying that. I, and I know there are, the majority of the committee feel very strongly, exactly what we're saying, what you're saying. I'm married to an Indian, doesn't mean much, but I can tell, I mean, it means a lot to me. Darling, sorry sweetheart. Yeah, it's going to get late and he's going to be like, I just, yeah, okay, we're done. No, but I, his, so the perspectives of different communities are so important to all of us working together and understanding how we are all, we have different backgrounds. So I would ask that anyone who would be willing, and we've been very lucky to have Eileen, to stand up and come and join in some of these conversations. It doesn't have to take a lot of time, but we would desperately would love to have varying opinions when we are going through these smaller subcommittees discussing goals and initiatives, especially in the challenge success. It's really important that we get to, that we hear lots of different voices. It's really important.
So I feel badly for your son. And this is the kind of thing that I would like to change, and this is why I was very happy to see challenge success come. Because to me, a child who bases his sense of self-worth, self-worth on external factors, there's a problem there. And what I would love to see is us be able to get children to have a sense of their own self-worth so that they can accept that they don't have to get all As. So this is the kind of thing that I'm very interested in helping.
Hi, this is Srinath Rada again. So I know it's almost 10:15, and in the interest of moving forward, as much as we would like, yeah.
I made a mistake. I made a mistake.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine, go ahead.
I'm sorry about it. So as I heard Julia make some comments on, you know, what, you know, someone said about it, and Paul made the clear direction, and we probably going to, you know, the challenge success said something, we, our school now is cooperating with this project. But however, I think, you know, just like, you know, I don't think Julia mentioned it really clearly, something, and one of the feature is the Asian student. I don't know if you guys look at the slide we made, we had about MTSS. That slide was very, very wonderful. There, we are about 60% of white student and 30% of, at least 30% of Asian students. Okay, we have very, we have a lot of things in common, but we do have difference in the perspective of looking at As. And, you know, Asian student doesn't mean we all focus on, you know, academic. We're not looking well, well around balanced study life. No, that's definitely not, okay? But somehow, if you're good at sports and you want your team to win, right? So there's nothing wrong with it. When you study something, you want to get a great, good grade. There's nothing wrong with it, okay? So what if, if you have balanced, if you're not struggle with getting As, if you're not stressed out, you're getting As, that's great. Why not, right? But if your child is struggle with something, if something, they need help, okay? That, as a parent, I'm an Asian parent, definitely, right? I have three children at school. I often to persuade my sons, oh, that's so, so many work you need to do. If you're not going to be pursue history in your life, why don't you think about take AE class, okay? That can be your best choice because it can lower your workload. But what if the child is willing to go for it? Like, I don't want lower my GPA. I have my energy, my, and my strength to go for it. Why not? There's nothing wrong for all As with the joy for learning. There's nothing wrong. Just, just like, you know, you can have examples for all your other things too. If you can go for Olympic champion, why not? But if you're not that type of athlete people, you know, you cannot do it. You just cannot, right? But if you can do it, what's wrong with that? So you just need a balance to see where your child is. And I have three of my children. One is very good at math, but I never required the second one who's swimming to go for math competition, okay? So the third one, balance with both, you know, little bit this and that. You just, as a parent, don't, I mean, I think Julia trying to say, you know, some child really focus on study, some child focus on this and that, does not necessarily mean we're going to change our climate. We do not encourage our student go for As. That's still part of the study, why not? We encourage our sports. We want to win, right? If we have our sports team represent AB, we have a big, big news, you know, on our beacon, beacon, right? Our local newspaper. We want them to win, right? We want any of our competition team win. We also want everybody learn, learn the knowledge around that school. We are very well-balanced school. We have the curriculum, three, four, five different levels. You choose what you need to go and you choose what you're able to go. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm definitely let you speak. I'm just going to say, we are really late into the evening, so the four people in line here and the four people in line here, I'm going to ask that we please, that be the, those be the last comments for this evening because we're really late and went much longer. And I think it was, I think it's been very productive. I think it's been very informative to all of us. So please, go ahead.
So first of all, thank you, Eileen. I think I kind of share your ideas as well. There is nothing wrong in being successful if you can be. That being said, Acton-Boxborough is considered a very good school district, and that's why we are here. And we pay a lot of real estate taxes and everything, and the parents are here concerned about the superintendent and all those reasons. As much as we understand that we love Dr. Brand and we don't want to move, but I understand at this point, let's move on. And I think the school committee's interest is in the alliance with that, that let's move ahead. Now, here are my concerns as we move ahead. So first thing is, this is a very high-performing school district, and we all can agree to that. So we have some set, we have some measures. In, as I understand, in the last superintendent search, those measures were actually taken out in terms of the academic qualification of the superintendent. So can we at least expect then when we are looking for the new superintendent, that there is a basic qualification, what we are looking for? And that's not just experience, but also academics? Because superintendent is the leader of the school, the leader and the future of our children. If we say that there is no requirement, that's what we are setting our children to be, that, well, you can get in anything, there is no requirement, you don't have to do anything, and you might just have a way to get in. So can we just expect that the school committee considers that if we look around, at least nearby, all high-performing school districts, there is a minimum requirement of master's degree and a PhD degree? So I would expect when you are looking for the search, you would have that reinstated, that there should be a good qualification requirement for the new superintendent, along with, of course, the experience, the academics are required. My second point is, I know that was part of the agenda, is the interim acting superintendent. I understand that you guys are, and that was in the agenda before that, there was a voting going to happening. Now, I want to understand, when you are selecting an interim superintendent, are you doing so with the understanding that the interim cannot and will not be considered for the permanent position? Because if, if that doesn't happen, we are losing the entire pool of talent which we can get. Because at this point, as someone before said, whatever has happened, I don't want to get into any more philosophical or anything, but there is an issue here, there is an issue between the school committee, superintendent, whatever it is. And then the second thing, when it comes up, that there is interim candidates who can actually run for the superintendent. Why would anybody apply? In any corporate world, whenever anybody's applying from outside, and we know that there is an internal candidate, how many people actually get into that process? They don't. So we are actually eliminating the process of hiring any qualified person. So can we be given that? You can give us that assurance that whoever goes for the interim, because of course they will have all the insider knowledge, they will not be considered to be the superintendent. However time you take, that's fine.
So the decision has not been made, that conversation hasn't even happened, whether to have an interim from an external or internal. There has not been a decision made at any level. I cannot sit here and say that if we get an external candidate that comes in or an internal candidate to step in as interim, that we then would never consider them to be a superintendent? Because why would the most qualified people even consider stepping in into an interim position, knowing that this is absolutely short-term and they couldn't possibly continue in that position? So I think it limits our pool of very good people.
So, okay, is that, because I just want to say that interim position is interim position, and we all understand it's an interim position.
We do.
So more than the interim position, being a very qualified person, we want the superintendent who comes in be qualified and actually be in the leadership position to take us to the next steps, not get into such kind of mess again. This is enough, we have done it enough.
We would agree with that.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Schmidt, and I'm from Acton. I have three young children. I understand everything is done, you all made your decision, he has made his decision. That's not what I'm here for. In your statement to the community, you've said that you guys mutually concluded that in the important matters, your views and interests are not aligned. And many times tonight, when people have asked you guys for your philosophy, which you stated in here, your operational and education philosophies, you have stated that you are working on them in your summer session, which means you don't have any philosophies to align with.
We just spent a good portion of time going, being very clear about where our goals are. I felt like someone wanted more clarification than we would be willing to see if we could write up something to clarify more. So I don't think that, I don't think, I don't think that that's a fair.
I don't think it's a fair representation to suggest that we do not have philosophies. Okay, I'm just saying what you stated is that you're working on them this summer session.
I said that in the summer session, that we can have a further discussion to make it more clear so that the public understands what is already there.
Okay, and I'm just saying what could have happened tonight, to clarify to everybody, would to have had those more specific philosophies for us tonight?
We can't do that outside of open meeting, and so we needed to, we need to have meetings to be talking about all this.
So why can't we be part of that discussion?
That is, it will be done in an open meeting. The summer workshop is an open meeting.
So then you also stated that you are disclosing the agreement tomorrow. Why not wait for this meeting until that has been disclosed?
I can ask Dave to discuss that, but we just need to.
We all have young children, we know it's late, so.
I, I mean, what I'm trying to say is that we, we all here, there are 11 of us on the committee, and we have to work, it's not easy to schedule an unexpected meeting to coordinate everybody. This was the night that we could do it. We couldn't get the release done before this. There is nothing else to it rather than, other than, we're simply trying to work the best that we can to get the information out there as quickly as we can, and to be as available as soon as possible to answer questions and to be open and hear what the community wants to hear from us. So I'm sorry that we didn't schedule this for tomorrow night or a night when maybe you feel like it would have been better. There are just, we all have tremendously busy lives and families and jobs, and we just, there just wasn't another night that we could do this.
Christine Marlowe, Boxborough. Earlier, when you were discussing your vision, you said that you made this decision for the best interest of the students and that you wanted them to have a positive academic experience. But my question is, if that is your philosophy, why were the teachers not notified until the parents were notified? I think that that's a huge, huge mistake.
So the teachers were notified at So the teachers were notified at 6:00 AM and the parents were notified at 4:00 PM and that was not our decision? We were not involved in when that information would be released?
What, so who, what?
Or how it would be released.
Who made those decisions? This was a joint effort? I'm assuming this was discussed in the executive meeting?
Dr. Brand made that decision. He asked if the process he wanted to follow was okay with us and we said yes, we wanted to respect the way he wanted to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Shere LeMing, resident of Acton. First I want to ask, can we pick different members of the committee to answer questions or it's only, it's mostly Amy and?
No, anyone who, anyone on the committee can answer any questions at any time. I guess the reason I refer, I've been referring so much to Mary is because I've been sitting in the chair's position for six days, she's been in it for a year and honestly, I, I just, that, that's why. But absolutely, any other committee member can speak up at any time and I would actually encourage them, you know, be happy to have somebody else talk.
All right. So my question is very specific first, when did the process have been initiated in terms of the superintendent issue? And when were all school committee members informed about the issue? How were they informed? How long did it take for all the school members to get aligned? If not, if they are not aligned at the beginning? My second question is, what positive changes comes out of sudden change that we have been seeing now? We have heard many negatives, tax, possible increase, chaot, chaotic period in terms of, you know, figuring out what to do, go through the search process and, you know, who, it's not even clear now what the next steps are. So I also want to ask what other alternatives were, were being considered and weighed? My last question is, what change that you will make to prevent us to be in this situation again? So after, say, we got a new superintendent and then at that time, after three months and we're coming back here again to hear the cannot disclose philosophical difference, I don't think anyone wants to go to that. So what will you do to prevent that from happening again? Thank you.
So I'll say that it's, it's very hard to talk about the process because of our requirements under the separation agreement. We, the committee members, I actually can't remember who was in the executive session, I, I think we were all there, but a couple have been traveling and everyone weighed in on that. And you will eventually see what the vote was on all of that. In terms of the positive changes, absolutely positive changes need to happen, these are learning moments. And I think we are thinking of, as a committee, how we incorporate that in all of our meetings and that is part of the plans for summer workshop, is to really dig in and improve these kind of processes. It's very difficult, believe me, this has been no fun for any of us either and we really want to improve the process for the community and for our board as well.
I just have one last comment. When we talk about like help all the student achieve their full potential, I think we not only need to look at the student who need more help, but also needs to look at student who want to achieve above what, you know, the, what people might call like normal name, uh, normal level of their grade. So we want to keep that in mind.
Let Paul respond to that, because.
So I, I have a daughter in the ODP program, which means she's on an IEP, she's special needs daughter. But that doesn't mean that I advocate just for kids with special needs. And I don't want to be thought of as someone who advocates just for the high achievers, I don't advocate just for the athletes. I love each child in this district.
Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Brown, Summer Street, Acton. I have a question about your process behind this decision in terms of finances. This is costing us 200 grand just in terms of Dr. Brand's salary. Did you consider any other less expensive ways of resolving this issue? Mediation has been mentioned. And if not, why not? Why was that not a concern for you?
You know, cost is always a concern for us in all of our budgeting and all, thinking about all of our initiatives and within those considerations, we do what we think is the best for the district and that's how we move forward here.
Did you discuss this financial concern when you came to this mutually agreed-upon decision?
So again, I, I can't talk about what's an executive session until the minutes are released, you will see what we discussed in there.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you very much for giving me this chance and thank you for your time, everybody here. I have a question. My name's Chin Yu, I'm living in Boxborough, I have two children at Blanchard, really appreciate everybody here, especially some people from Boxborough, working as multiple roles in the school system, appreciate that, thanks. And I have a question, I think the lady previous to me, the second one prior to me, have already mentioned something about the educational and the operational philosophy. And I understand from tonight's discussion, I happened to have a chance to heard some of the ladies' comments about their personal philosophy in terms of being a committee in this school system. And I, I kind of memorized, I mean, put some note here, it's more about fostering and nurturing some strong capable learner, not only academically and socially, I haven't got a chance to heard about the rest of the team. And I'm just wondering, and also I understand you guys are working on it, try to align something out of it and regarding makeup, you know, something like one version. I'm just wondering, is it possible that everybody of you guys can put something under your introduction on your website? Because I've been to the website to look at our committee members introduction or background or, you call it profile or whatever, and I don't really see too much about your philosophy there. And then all of a sudden, this question brought up and obviously I heard now it's kind of surfaced as an issue after so many years of being silent. So in order to avoid some confusion like that for the future or the, for the, you know, coming up searching process, can we have us already have something in place to the public, everybody can know, at least what our member, who we voted for representing us, what they are thinking about? And the next question, I just want to make it simple, did you guys really expect or anticipate such a big public participation and the response when you entered a separation agreement with the current or resigned superintendent and with certain, to the certain degree of the compromise on the transparency? Thank you very much.
I'm not surprised.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Albert, former, Albert Kong, former AB student. This isn't really a question or about the superintendent, so y'all can relax. I just wanted to address the, it popped up unexpectedly, the issue about high achievers striving to get As, that I believe Mary, Paul and Eileen touched upon. I wrote an article to The Beacon recently about this culture of excellence we have at AB. And I don't think it's that we shouldn't encourage students to get As. I was one of those students who always wanted As. My parents even told me I could take an AE class and I, like your son, said, no, I want to stay in all honors, I want to take all APs. And it wasn't my parents pressuring me, but it was really the culture that AB fostered that really pushed me toward that. And at least from my point of view, I feel that that is unhealthy. If a student intrinsically wants to achieve As, then he or she should have every right to achieve As. But if the community and culture makes achieving As the only way to be accepted in that community, makes achieving excellence the only way that people will listen to you, that's toxic, that's very unhealthy and it's damaging to our students. So moving forward, I think that it shouldn't just be addressing, oh, so many students are achieving As, but really addressing how we redefine excellence and that we don't need to keep on placing first, we don't need to keep on getting As to be considered to be excellent. We shouldn't stop doing those things, but that shouldn't be the sole definition of what success is in our school district. Thank you.
Can I, yeah, go ahead.
I think what you said is the perfect reminder of why we have taken on challenge success in our district as a focus. The tagline for challenge success is challenging the, our traditional notions of success. It means that there are huge efforts throughout this district to educate parents, students, faculty, community members, that a successful student isn't only one that only gets As, that there's lots of ways to be successful in school and out of school. And I think what you mentioned is, as how you felt when you were here, is a big driving force for why this was taken on. And I think we've seen a lot of good initiatives come out of it and I look forward to seeing more.
And I just wanted to say, I would really, I would really love to read your article and if you wouldn't mind, we could try to find it, but if you wouldn't mind forwarding it to the school committee, because I, I think that it, what you had to say was, is really important to think about. And then maybe we can have you at a school committee meeting to just have further conversation at a later date. So thank you very much for speaking. And I'm gonna add one more comment. Albert, what we need to achieve as success in our community is to get students like Albert to come home and live here in Acton. We've had opportunities to talk outside of this incident and he's just a very bright young man who's really committed to others and I think that's what we need. And I will say personally, although this has been very difficult and will probably continue to be difficult for a while, I really do appreciate the civic participation. We do need to hear your voices and maybe not just at these really challenging times.
My name's Corinne Hogs, I live in Acton.
Okay, so Corinne, you gotta be the last.
I will be the last.
Okay.
I hope it's an easy question to, to get an answer to. When will the minutes from the executive sessions be released?
So those will be voted at the June 8th school committee meeting.
Okay, a lot of us, I think, have been learning about opening meeting law on the fly. It's my understanding that minutes don't need to be approved, that they can be released in draft form?
No.
Not executive sessions, they actually have to be voted on?
At least.
What's that?
The minutes that have been approved as being the correct minutes of the meeting is a separate decision by any public body, when to release them and when to release them at such time as it will no longer be the purposes of which the executive session is held in the first place.
So, just so everyone can hear, I know we're being recorded, the, the statement from our lawyer was that we have to vote the minutes to approve them and then we vote to release them. And the appropriate time to release them is when the matters that are covered in the meeting are no longer of critical concern or, you know, actively being discussed, so.
So are they, is there, is there a gap between the time that you vote to approve them and vote to release them?
Sometimes, not always.
So can you vote to approve them at your next meeting?
I believe that's
On May 30th?
Uh, well, we were planning for June 8th, I don't know if they're fully ready yet, they, they were long meetings and so I, I think our plan is for June 8th, but.
Thank you.
All right, thank you to everyone who came and spoke for participation tonight. I, I'm sorry, I have to cut off because this is, we still have an entire section that we haven't even gotten to and it's 11 o'clock.
It's just a quick question.
Okay.
Please.
Go ahead, yes, please.
So I asked you earlier that your views on the school choice, that, and that you were unanimous in your desire to maintain it. Hypothetically, what would happen if a superintendent came in and decided that that wasn't in our best interest anymore? And is that a condition? Would that be considered a philosophy or a sticking point, a criteria? Like what, just hypothetically, because we've had an issue with sort of self-segregation in our schools. And I've just wondered, and I'm not taking sides in this at all, I'm just saying hypothetically, what if a superintendent applied, or someone applied for the superintendent position who felt that that was not in our best interest anymore as a community? And I'm just wondering, because it hasn't been talked about at all in terms of philosophy or your, the values or goals of the town. And it's a big one, because I know that it's what everybody talks about. And I haven't heard anyone mention it and I certainly don't see it as a provision on the, on a website or, you know. So I'm just wondering if you can answer that.
I would say that probably you haven't heard anyone mention it because it's such, it's already such an ingrained part of who we are in the town of Acton, Acton, Boxborough. If, so that is a question that's, I've written down and when we go and start talking about next steps, we can certainly have that conversation, but I guess things, that is such a, it's such an important piece of who we are, that that hasn't been part of the discussion.
Well, I guess, yeah, except that what if someone were to disagree or find that it in fact was a problem? So who decides that, is what I'm saying? So you all decided that it is in our best interest to have it, is what you're saying?
So that's what, that's what we have continued to decide and if, so you've, you've brought this up and it would be, when we start discussing next steps, then it can be something that we all say or decide, and I'm not going to speak for the whole committee here, but that that would be a part of the process when doing interviews, that we would, yes, go ahead. God, please cut me off.
I mean, I think you understand why I'm asking the question.
Yes, I understand why you're asking the question. And I will say, and this is my view alone, we haven't discussed this, but most things we do in this district, we, I don't think in any district we can have one policy that stays static into perpetuity. I think we have to always look at environment, look at data, get information and make decisions based on that.
Exactly, I agree. So that's why I'm asking, because if, if the committee were static or decided in that and that was a deal breaker, I just feel like that would be problematic because the town isn't involved in those decisions. So, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. I, we are gonna move into the next section, hopefully it'll be short because it's so very late. And, okay, all right.
So I didn't, I didn't even want to.
Okay, all right. Can I get a sense from the committee how you feel about moving this, the last part of the meeting to Tuesday? Are there any objections to doing that?
No.
You sure, guys? Okay. Okay, so we are not gonna do that. We're gonna, we will have this, our next Acton, Boxborough School Committee meeting is Tuesday, May 30th, 7:30 PM in the junior high library. If we get a sense, as we did before, that there are, there's a much larger crowd that would like to be present, then we will make adjustments accordingly as we did for this meeting. So can I please have a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstentions.
Thank you very much for coming tonight and good night.